Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this meeting to order on May 27, 2025 at 6:00 PM. This time, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callan, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, and Ms. Rogers. And present on Zoom is Ms. Melnick. And Ms. Melnick, for the record, can you state why you're attending via Zoom?
Yes, my apologies to my colleagues and to the public. I am still sick and I am participating from home.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues and members of the public that are here. Would you please join me in a moment of silence as you are able? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the National Anthem sung by the Old Donation School Chorus. Their chorus director is Ms. Ashley Landon.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks a lot. Oh, thank you so much. What a special treat. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. That was, that was beautiful. Now, Chair Brown, our favorite part of the evening is, is celebrations and recognitions to, to our great students. And tonight, boy, do we have a lot to celebrate. So I'm gonna go ahead and let Mr. Bowen Steele begin.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. We are now to celebrate our annual music awards. Our first recognition is for the students have been named to one of the following groups: the Virginia Music Education Association's All-State Band, All-State Chorus, All-State Orchestra, Senior Honors Choir, and the American Choral Directors Association National Honor Choir. The All-Virginian Band and Orchestra Ensembles and the All-Virginian Chorus are composed of students who pass multiple auditions to reach the high level of performance in the Commonwealth. Students must first audition at the district level and earn acceptance in their respective ensembles. Then they must then audition a second time and be accepted for participation in the respective strand. In addition, Honor Choir students have been selected as deserving choral students by the VMEA Robert Shambach Honors Choir Memorial Awards Scholarship Committee. The Virginia Music Educators Association Seniors Honors Choir is a highly selective, elite choral ensemble comprised of 12th grade students from across Virginia. It's considered one of the most prestigious choirs experienced for high school vocalist in the state. The ACDA National Honor Choir is the audition-only honor choir that takes place every two years as part of the American Choral Directors Association's National Conference. The selection process is highly competitive with over 5,000 students auditioning for a limited number of spots. To be chosen means that the students have distinguished themselves as top performers and choral musicians. The students we are recognizing tonight are grouped by the schools they attend, and we've invited their music directors and principals to join them. Students, please come forward when your name is called. We're gonna start with recognizing the students from Cox High School. Dr. Michael Kelly, he is the school's principal, and the band director is Mike Lane. The students being recognized are Connor Lane, All-Virginian Band, and Tommy Crossley, All-Virginian Band. Next, we have Kellum High School. The Kellums' principal is Dr. Ryan C. Schubert, and the band director is Cameron Baker. The student being recognized is Bobby McNalton, All-Virginian Band. All right, moving on to Landstown High School. The principal is Dr. Paula Johnson, and the choir director is Jeremy Yoder. The student being recognized is Richie Lee, All-Virginian Chorus. Now, we'll move on to Ocean Lakes High School, where the principal is Dr. Clara LeBlanc. The band director is Kathleen Prophet, and the chorus director is William Boardman. The students being recognized are Theodore Everett Keith, All-Virginian Orchestra, Kelsey Lee, All-Virginian Chorus. Next is Princess Anne High School. The principal is Mr. Todd Tarkington. The band director is John Boyd, and the orchestra director is Alex Kelly. The students being recognized are Noah G., All-Virginian Band, Linda Lee, All-Virginian Chorus, Cameron Spears, All-Virginian Chorus. Next is Salem High School and the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School. And we have a lot of them, and I'm just claiming right now, I'm not gonna get all your names right, so please forgive me. Oh, I'm going for it, but alrighty. Mr. Kerry Manago is the principal. The academy coordinator is Sharon Burr, and the VPAA choral director is Corbin Pinto. The students being recognized are Olivia McGee, All-Virginian Chorus, Senior Honors Choir, Adrienne Crane, Senior Honors Choir, Narra Ashburn, sorry, Senior Honors Choir, Gabriel Doonsberry, Senior Honors Choir, Mackenzie Estrada, All-Virginian Chorus and National Honors Choir, Alex Shoup, All-Virginian Chorus, National Honors Choir, Niles Deloche, All-Virginian Chorus, National Honors Choir, Alexis Gonzalez, National Honors Choir, Madison Salisbury, All-Virginian Chorus, Reagan Ramsey, All-Virginian Chorus, Alicia Johnson, All-Virginian Chorus, Emma Howard, All-Virginian Chorus, Kaylee Mcfee, All-Virginian Chorus, Evan Weisner, All-Virginian Chorus, and Asayo Joyce, All-Virginian Chorus. Congratulations. Now, we're gonna move on to Tallwood High School. Tallwood's principal is Dr. Ryan Omira. The band director is Timothy J. Rosentini. The band students are being recognized are DeShawn McLendon, All-Virginian Concert Band, Robert Perarcy, All-Virginian Concert Band. Congratulations to y'all for your outstanding work. Now, will everyone please join me in a big round of applause for these outstanding accomplishments?
Next, we will recognize our school music programs for receiving the Program of Honor Award. Let's welcome our Virginia Honor Orchestra Directors. From Kimpsville High School, Dr. Natalia Goodlow; from Princess Anne High School, Alex Kelly; from Salem High School, Laura Parker. Let's welcome our Virginia Honor Band Directors. Cox High School, Mike Lane; Kellum High School, Cameron Baker; Kimpsville High School, Brian Webb; Landstown Middle School, Justin Thornton; Ocean Lakes High School, Caitlin Prophet; Old Donation School, James Reed; Princess Anne High School, John Boyd; Salem High School, Andrew Smith; and Tallwood High School, Timothy Rosentini. To earn this award, to earn this award, ensembles must receive a superior rating at the Virginia Band and Orchestra's Concert Assessment and demonstrate the strength of their music program through various indicators, including VBODA Jazz Assessment, Student Selection for Regional and District Events, and Superior Ratings at the VBODA Marching Assessment, to name a few. The Program of Honor bestows the title of Virginia Honor Band or Virginia Honor Orchestra to those who successfully earned this achievement, which is the highest honor awarded in the Commonwealth. This is the inaugural year for this award for string orchestra programs. Congratulations, Directors. We are proud of you.
Next up are our school music departments, who are being honored as Blue Ribbon Schools. The Virginia Music Educators Association's Blue Ribbon Award is a prestigious recognition awarded to select schools that demonstrate exceptional commitment and achievement in music education. Schools earning this award receive superior ratings for band, chorus, and orchestra at district assessments. The award is a testament to the hard work and dedication of music educators and their students, and serves as a symbol of excellence in music education. Let's please welcome staff members who make up their school's music department and were instrumental in their schools receiving this monumentous award. Feel free to applaud for each school as they are recognized. First, from Brandon Middle School, please welcome band director Amy Palat, chorus director Shelby Wurst, and orchestra director Lindsay Cook. Next, from Corporate Landing Middle School, please welcome band director Amy Shafer, chorus director Victor Hugo, and orchestra director Leann Blaisdell. From Cox High School, please welcome band director Mike Lane, chorus director Andrea Manaski, and orchestra director Kevin Fields. From Great Neck Middle School, please welcome band director Heather Smith, chorus director Luann Mead, and orchestra director Aaron Stafford. From Green Run High School, please welcome orchestra director Josh Poe, band director David Hobson, and chorus director Ryan Duncan. From Kimpsville High School, please welcome band director Brian Webb, chorus director Karen Nemeth, and orchestra director Natalia Goodlow. From Landstown Middle School, please welcome band director Justin Thornton, chorus director Amanda Ellis, and orchestra director Jeff Bailey. From Ocean Lakes High School, please welcome band director Caitlin Prophet, chorus director William Boardman, and orchestra director Angela Henry. From Old Donation School, please welcome band director James Reed, chorus director Ashley Landon, and orchestra director Paul Baird. From Plaza Middle School, please welcome band director Manuel Hernandez II, chorus director Erin Duboz, and orchestra director Sarah McGee. Congrats. From Princess Anne High School, please welcome band director John Boyd, chorus director Katie Davis, and orchestra director Alex Kelly. From Princess Anne Middle School, please welcome band director Theodore Young, chorus director Anita Lynn, and orchestra director Danielle Fagan. Congrats. And from Salem High School, please welcome band director Andrew Smith, chorus director Lynn Germin, and orchestra director David Boone. Congrats again. From Salem Middle School, please welcome band director James Bernard, chorus director Maya Williams, and orchestra director Laura Parker.
Next, we will honor the Tallwood High School percussion ensemble for performing at the 2024 VMEA Conference Performance. Tallwood students and staff, please come forward. Being invited to perform at a state music conference is a significant achievement, representing recognition as one of the premier performing ensemble in the Commonwealth. This distinction is not given to all groups. Ensembles must undergo a competition application process highlighting the exuberance and prestigious of selection. Performing before a large and influence audience at such an event is a powerful acknowledgement of a group's exceptional musical excellence and high standing. It is truly one of the highest honor an ensemble can receive. Tallwood's director of band is Timothy J. Rosatini, Rosatini. Participating student musicians include Isaiah Brown, Mathis, Carlson, Brandon O'Rourke, RJ Priarres, and Lucas Repinkis. Did I get that right? Pronounce it for me. Repinsky. Congratulations. We are proud of you.
Ms. Rogers?
Next, we will honor the Salem High School Visual Performing Arts Academy Vocal and Instrumental Programs for participating in the Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade and Ceremony. Salem students and staff, please come forward. Salem's vocal and instrumental programs were selected to participate in the National Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade commemorating the 80th anniversary of World War II. This opportunity is unlike any other, as they joined with bands and choirs from across America, led by Marine Forces Pacific Band, in saluting our veterans, active-duty military members, and their families as part of the grand finale event, the 80th anniversary of the Pearl Harbor Commemoration. The instrumental director at Salem is David Boone, and the vocal director is Corbin Pinto. Congratulations, students. We are proud of you.
Finally, we will honor the Princess Anne High School Fabulous Marching Cavaliers. Please come forward. The Fabulous Marching Cavaliers won the Class 2A Virginia Marching Band Cooperative State Championship. Alex Viato is the drum major, Lauren Clark is the field captain, and John Boyd is the band director. This is not the second, not the third, but the fifth state championship the band has won in the past six years. Congratulations, Marching Cavaliers. We are proud of you.
I feel like we need to have a drum roll for this next one. And now, we are proud to announce that Virginia Beach City Public Schools has once again been named a Best Community for Music Education in 2025 by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. Will members of the Performing Arts Office please come forward? This is the 16th year VBCPS has been awarded this designation. The award program celebrates outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment to and access to music education. VBCPS is one of only 7% of school districts across the nation to receive this prestigious award. In Virginia, we are one of 23 school divisions to receive this recognition, representing 17% of all school districts in the state. Along with our music students and staff, we'd like to recognize Dr. Crystal Lewis-Wilkerson, Director of K-12 and Gifted Education, Mr. John Bruington, Coordinator of Fine Arts, and Mr. Meredith Brookman, Instructional Specialist. Let's give a warm congratulations, VBCPS music students and staff. We are so proud of you. Thank you so much for all you do.
Okay, we are now on to the adoption of our agenda. There is one modification, and that is to add the 25-26 schedule of meetings to the Action H. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? Ms. Rogers?
I wasn't gonna do a modification. I was just gonna make a statement. Is that all right?
About, we'll, we'll do discussion in a second. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented and modified? Led by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Ms. Rogers?
I just wanted to state that because Policy 5-4 didn't follow procedures, Mrs. Melnick requested that this be moved, and we haven't moved it. I will not be able to support adopting the agenda tonight.
Okay. Ms. Melnick?
I too will not be able to. I, I cannot adopt this agenda either. I
I felt that the Policy Review Committee took advantage of our colleague, who was returning from bereavement. I felt that policies were done behind the scenes, that policies were already read lines to the committee, and I have never, ever seen, ever five people ask for something to go back to a policy committee for discussion and have it so blatantly ignored. I can't be party to that, and I thought that was I thought that was poor, a poor reflection from this board.
Dr. Green?
I also, for the same reasons as Mrs. Rogers and Ms. Melnick, will not be supporting the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and modified. Oh, I'm sorry. I call for the vote. Voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have six ayes in five days. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented and modified.
Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report, and I turn this over to Dr. Robertson for that.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families. One of our Princess Anne International Baccalaureate seniors, Naaman Shadri, earned his way to the semifinalist level of the 2025 United States Presidential Scholars Program. Naaman is here with us tonight. And Naaman, if you would please stand, your parents are welcome to stand with you so we congratulate you. As a senior, Naaman served as captain of the Princess Anne Scholastic Bowl Team and as the president of the Math Honor Society. He is involved with the Stanford Neuroscience Journal Club and is also a city council-appointed voting member of the Historic Preservation Commission. In the fall, he plans to study neuroscience and financial engineering at Princeton University. He is the only student in Hampton Roads to reach this level, and he is one of only 10 in Virginia. Congratulations, Naaman. A member of our talented food service team, Bella Gonzalez, recently received a national award. Ms. Gonzalez is the Cafeteria Manager at Newcastle Elementary. More than a dozen colleagues and community members nominated her for the Tyson's K-12 Hunger Heroes Award. Officials from Tyson Foods visited Newcastle to surprise her as one of a handful of national winners. The prize includes a $5,000 grant. Ms. Gonzalez started a culinary club at Newcastle and makes students' birthdays extra special by rolling out a birthday card, complete with lively music and festive cheer. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, for being a superhero in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The 16th Annual STEM Triptych Challenge on May 14th was a huge success. Teams of students competed in robot, makerspace, and cybersecurity challenges at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. When students weren't competing in the challenges, they took part in hands-on, interactive activities at the event's career fair. More than 25 industry representatives showcased careers in STEM and the maritime industry. Participants included new shipbuilding, NASA, Amazon, and more. Thank you to the volunteers and community partners who helped make the day a success for over 800 of our students. Our Office of Career and Technical Education held a Letter of Intend... Signing Day on May 21st at the Advanced Technology Center. We honored about 50 students for their commitments to the workforce and enlistment in the military. These students earned more than 100 professional credentials from the Advanced Technology Center and the Virginia Beach Technical and Career Education Center, from everything from automotive service technology to website design. Representatives from dozens of local businesses and the U.S. Armed Forces were there to sign employee agreements with our students, while family members and teachers looked on with pride. Two more. The Department of Human Resources hosted successful hiring events this spring to support staffing efforts for the 2025-26 school year. The Educator Hiring Expo was held at Langston High School on March 29th. This was the division's first in-person job fair since 2020. We welcomed nearly 250 educators and provided school teams with the opportunity to meet and interview candidates on the spot. Continuing the momentum, the School Support Hiring Expo took place on May 3rd at Bezos High School. Representatives from key operational departments interviewed attendees and extended over 70 letters of intent to hire. Then finally, more than 100 elementary school athletes with intellectual disabilities from across Virginia Beach City Public Schools participated in the Little Feet Meet on April 29th at Salem High School. In this Special Olympics event, students competed in various track and field events, accompanied by hundreds of peer buddies, parents, staff, and volunteers, including Salem High School students, the Virginia Beach Police Department, and the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office. Thank you, school board members, for joining me at this event to cheer on our athletes and our volunteers. And thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you. And any recognitions?
Yes, I have two recognitions tonight. The first is, we are pleased that last week you approved our recommendation for Dawn Vang, currently an Assistant Principal at John B. Die Elementary School to be the next principal at Pembroke Elementary School. And I see Dawn in the audience. Congratulations. Dawn, I see you have some guests.
I do. Because my family does not live in the great state of Virginia, I ask my school family to help me. I have my principal, Mr. Karilak. I have our school counselor, Mrs. Cleveland, and I have two of our teachers from Charcolton. This is good for you.
Congratulations. Next up, we're pleased that previously you had accepted our recommendation for Julie Spencer. Previously, the Technical Services Support Supervisor in Department of Technology to be the new coordinator of customer support and quality assurance in Department of Technology. Congratulations, Julie. And I see you have some guests, some excited guests.
I have a family here, Ms. Ella, Ms. Cole, and my director, Joe Davis.
Congratulations. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the recognitions.
Thank you. That brings us to the approval of meeting minutes. There are two sets. Are there any modifications to the May 6th, 2025 Special School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the May 6th, 2025 Special School Board Meeting Minutes as presented, moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the May 6th meeting minutes.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the May 6th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Thank you. We are now on to the May 13th Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modifications to those minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the May 13th, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes, moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open for the May 13th Regular School Board Meeting Minutes.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the May 13th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section is for the school board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the school board meeting. I call upon all speakers and persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the school board wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker?
Yes, before I do that, we did have a cancellation. Speaker number 13 did cancel. So, we'll start with our student speakers. Our first speaker is Liz Dartree, then Madison Austria, and Hattie Friedman.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Liz. I am 10th grade student at Greymon High School. Public speaking isn't really easy for me. I struggle with social anxiety, but some matters more than fear, justice, fairness, and the future of students like me. Students today face challenges that may not be fully understood by those who are no longer in our shoes. Academic pressures, social dynamics, and personal struggles can be overwhelming. DEI programs do exist to ensure every student, regardless of their circumstances, has tools to succeed. DI is not a non-fair advantage. It provides essential support and resources so all students can thrive, regardless of race, background, identity, gender, or circumstances. Without it, we create classrooms of exclusion, silence, and inequality. Banning DEI harms students of color, girls, students with disabilities, the homeless, and anyone facing barriers to success. It sends a dangerous message that only some deserve to be seen, heard, and supported. Removing DEI doesn't make school neutral. It makes them complicit. It... Exclusion. DI is not a threat to education. It is essential to it. Schools must be places where all students can thrive, where opportunities exist for everyone, and where inclusion is the standard, not the exception. Let's be clear, blocking DEI is not just a policy decision. It is a rejection of progress. It is racist, misogynistic, and ableist, reinforcing barriers generations have worked to dismantle. This is not a step forward. It is a regression, stripping marginalized students of their support they deserve. You are not just shaping policy. You are shaping the future. Eliminating DEI limits the pathways for those who need them the most and compromises the promise of equality, innovation, and opportunity for future generations. Speaking up today isn't easy for me, but I refuse to let fear silence me. Do what is just. Stand with us. Stand for what is right. Do not ban DEI. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Madison Austria, Hattie Friedman, and then Nash Phillips.
Hello, good evening. My name is Madison Taylor, and I'm a junior in the Legal Studies Academy from First Colonial High School. To sum up a few words spoken to the LSA, you deserve what you get. We must protect our communities, and you are entitled to be heard. It is about finding ways to make change because unfair, and unequal, and unjust exist in the world. If you recognize those words, you should. Dawn Scott, the Speaker of the House of Virginia, visited my school to speak to us. Many of you on the board today were there, listening and nodding in a court. He believed that unfairness is a natural part of the world and that it is our responsibility as students to create pockets of space where we can belong, explore our differences, and utilize our voices to advance. Drawing on his personal experience, he articulated the significance of young involvement and inspiring change. As I have done in the past, I stand before you now to advocate for reform and to support and encourage students' right to speak up. For countless students, school should be a sanctuary, an environment where their unique and diverse identities are not only acknowledged, but celebrated. When we deny students this essential resource, we undermine their comfort and hinder their learning potential. In addition, providing educators with tools and guidance to discuss race with respect and empathy, it fosters professionalism and paves the way for transformative growth among students, which ultimately benefits entire communities. Before now, you spoke about these communities. If you are truly committed to protecting our communities, remember that your efforts shouldn't be confined to just Virginia Beach Public Schools and its funding. Each student returns to a distinct community, and the manner in which they are taught to conduct themselves and the encouragement they receive from their educational environment significantly shapes the health of that community. Prioritizing education is key, and it begins with ensuring the implementation of DEI policies within schools. This creates platforms for students to express themselves, opportunities for growth, and it requires your invaluable support. On that note, I'd like to introduce you to the East Coast Debate Initiative, fondly known as ECDI. My partners Mia Sproule and Maren Floyd and I are working diligently to establish our nonprofit organization. ECDI is focused on amplifying student voices through the promotion of speech and debate in schools. We are a burgeoning student-led coalition of debaters based in Hampton Roads, determined to enhance access to speech and debate resources, not only in rural areas, but across the east coast of Virginia. Drawing from our firsthand experience and a deep understanding of the unique challenges faced by our region, we are dedicated to fostering competitive, skill-driven environments that ignite a passion for argumentation. As we pursue our mission, we kindly ask for your support in uplifting communities like ours and empowering student voices further. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hattie Friedman, then Nash Phillips.
Alrighty. Hello. My name is Hattie Friedman, and I'm here once more to talk about DEI. One of the dentists got a cavity filled, so if I droll over the place or talk weird, I'm so sorry. But that's how much this topic matters to me. That's why I'm here today. I am still numb, still can't feel half my face, but I am here today to talk about what matters. The more I get up here, the less and less prepared I get because nothing seems to matter, what I say. And Mr. Culpepper, I can't even get his full attention right now. But maybe some of this might get through your head. So, quick analogy here. The New York Knicks have no white guys on their team. I didn't know that until I was watching the game the other night. But does that make them a bad team? No. Does that make them woke or part of this DEI agenda? Does that take away opportunity from other white players? No, it does not. These players, not just on the Knicks, but all throughout the NBA, inspire. They inspire young boys and girls on and off the court to show them where hard work can get them, even though if their hard work looked a little different and they needed a mentor or a tutor or even a five extra minutes on a test. But working hard looks different for everybody. I am not affected in any which way, shape, or form when my friend takes another 10 minutes on a vocab quiz. That would be equity. Equality, Ms. Dwyer, because I know you've been a little confused in the past, would be me getting that extra 10 minutes when I didn't even need it. And while we're on the topic, Ms. Williams, who also does not have my full attention right now, that recovery school you're pushing oh-so-hard-for, hate to break it to you, but that's DEI. Why? Because I don't need it. My friend Madison didn't need it. Okay, but there's a handful of kids that do need it. That is what equity is. There are so many kids that need that program and get back on their feet. That's what equity is. Obviously, the sport does not value diversity either, because that is the first thing you guys took with your little red Sharpie and crossed off. Okay? But I just can't wrap my head around why this is scary. Okay, why someone being different is scary? Because that's how we learn. We learn about differences. In elementary school, I learned about the Native Americans of Jamestown and Pocahontas, and I learned about slavery and the Civil War. In middle school, I learned about Vietnam and Korea and those wars that we fought, that we didn't even have a place in. But I learned about... And now I learn about European history and how other cultures influenced it. I learned about how China influenced, how the Middle East influenced. I learned through diversity. I learned through knowing others' past. I learned through knowing experiences in this present that aren't mine. The more this board does, the more passionate I become, and I know my generation feels the same. You think we are not watching, but trust me, we are. Also, Mr. Bonsill, thank you for the vote on the phone and the PRC. Clearly, it does show that you are listening to some stuff the students say. So, I really hope this, you know, maybe this sinks through too. But I hope you guys are listening, and I will be here and speak on the right side of history. Because I look back, and I don't want other generations to look back and think like we're Nazi Germany or we're Communist Soviet Union. Okay, I don't want them to look back and see the MAGA America, because that's not right, and I will not let that sink.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Nash Phillips.
The 11 of you that sit before me as the Virginia Beach School Board ought to be some of the biggest advocates for public education. You see firsthand the incredible outcomes produced by VBCPS. However, by homogenizing opportunity in our community and leaving non-white, non-straight, non-male students in the dust, Virginia Beach is becoming an example of the beginning of the end of thriving public education. There's a reason why those in favor of school choice are thrilled with this plan. The end result is a voucher system, which, as we've seen in Arizona, only serves to let inequity grow. And I'm one of the lucky ones. As a graduating senior this year, I won't have to contend with whatever nightmarish implementation plan the board comes up with tonight. And I'm thrilled to say sayonara, head off to Chicago, where my new school, Northwestern, instead of cowering in fear like the VBCPS board, has stood firm in the face of... Has stood firm in the face of Trump's draconian retaliatory and insecure demand to end radical indoctrination in schools. He, like with so many other words, has confused education with indoctrination. Because proper education has led many students to the conclusion that he is unfit to be president. Trump has realized that since minority voters are those that least support him, he ought to do everything in his power to ma- ensure that they are disenfranchised and underrepresented. The only indoctrination going on would be telling our students that the world is already equal. And in that accommodating each student exactly the same is going to lead to the best outcomes. Some sort of hyper egalitarian rhetoric that in practice in the history of the United States has never been applicable. For those that have spoken against D E I and the idea of equity by claiming similarities to Marxism or Communism, of which there have been quite a few. These ideologies are focused almost exclusively on the economic systems of a society, not social issues, and certainly not education. In fact. Equ- equity and education actually foster success in capitalist societies by acknowledging the natural economic inequities in our nation. And nonetheless, providing sufficient opportunities for all students to succeed. Not neglecting those that are historically less advantaged and proclaiming that they can pull themselves up by their bootstraps when the lack of acknowledgement by people in positions of privilege is what continually perpetuates those disparities in the first place. Conservatives are enamored by that bootstrap phrase. By taking away programs that ena- empower minority students who are constantly facing systemic oppression. It is naive to believe that it is as easy to become metrically successful from an impoverished perspective in twenty twenty-five America as it is for those in places of privilege. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is why what has transpired amongst this school board over the last seven weeks is so tragic. Virginia Beach had not only had one of the top-rated D E I programs of any district in the U S. But is one of the largest districts to falter under the pressure of the executive branch, setting a terrifying example for the rest of the country. We know that the letters D E I offend many of you so much, but I implore you to consider what you are stripping away from staff and students tonight. As you consider what programs and protections you eliminate in the five-four policy tonight. A world in which we cease to acknowledge our diversity is a dystopian.
And that is time. Our next speakers are Kim Mayo, Alan Wakefield, and Natalie Bray.
Good evening. I'm addressing Pleasure House Point tonight as it relates to V B students, including mine. This is not a criticism of school board or Dr. Robertson. Despite strong opposition, over five thousand trees and close to twelve acres of our land at a beloved nature preserve was destroyed. Twelve million dollar cost to taxpayers. The project was fast-tracked with a back meeting near Christmas, where many thoughtful environmental studies students raised concerns. Other students appeared in a short film. A V B school employee emailed that the project was quote forcibly pushed through. Many of us community leaders feel students were manipulated. Children should never be used in carefully crafted P R or damage control. My District Nine City Councilman put forth the expensive C I P transfer ordinance. In his Facebook, he shared what he called a shout-out to these students for restoring wetland habitat. In the opinion of many, trying to orchestrate a feel-good story. However, according to experts, including lifelong resident Dr. John Aguirre, Ph.D. in Wildlife Conservation. This is what he called a wetland scheme. One of the many negative impacts is Diamondback terrapins have lost their habitat, their last habitat on the Lynn Haven River. His full remarks can be found on the podcast Patch by Patch. Dr. Aguirre also questions profit motive. The two councilmen part of the working group took campaign contributions from a developer who owns the nearby parcel. Realtors tell us the land behind the clear cut will be developed into million-dollar lots with expansive views from the removed forest. There are also meetings the public did not know about. The city produced a debunking article that undermined the volunteer work of the environmental studies students. I was told the two students went out and did a count the second time using high-tech equipment. Their work was validated. Then the city bulldozed our public land. Cruel. Alicia, a nurse, wrote, "I work at a hospital. I see a lot of suffering and sadness. On my days off, Pleasure House Point is my place to ground myself and find peace. I spend almost every day there. It has brought me so much comfort during difficult times. Now, when I walk outside, all I hear is the sounds of trees being hacked down. There's a pit in my stomach I can't seem to shake. I'm sad not only for myself, but for everyone and everything affected." Another Marley said, "My soul is crumbling. My family is from the Roundtree Reservation in California. And my whole life, I was taught that humans are stewards of the earth and all its inhabitants." I agree. Community will not forget. I love skiing and hiking, and this was a little slice of heaven for me. There's a recall petition and lawsuits. Please see Save Pleasure House Point to reach us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Wakefield, Natalie Bray, and Valerina Davis.
Good evening. This is a piece of granite, which we'll talk about tonight. Dr. Robertson, Superintendent, School Board Chair Ms. Brown, and School Board members. Are you ready for an igneous rock tonight? Deep in the earth, the temperature can be over two thousand degrees Fahrenheit. It's hot down here. The magma liquid rock looks at me and says, "We are in love, Mr. Wakefield. I just came down to see why you are in love." Well, you know, opposites attract. I've heard that before. We are mainly made of two minerals, quartz and felspar. We're flowing around and waving at each other. I see the letter D. Mr. Wakefield, it takes different numbers of minerals to make a rock. I know, but the second letter is E for equity. The magma is not all cooling at the same rate, so they have different sized crystals forming. You know, equity. The last letter is inclusion. Mr. Wakefield, we have such a variety of minerals. They all cool together below ground. So D E I is alive and well in the earth. Hopefully, it's above the earth also. But this special rock, granite, passed the earth science S O L test. Whoa, that's groovy. Well, you know, in my class, granite asked me if it can tell two jokes. Okay, I said, but they have to be short and squeaky clean for the school board, okay? What's your all-time favorite band? Granite says The Rolling Stones. Well, that's bad. Why did Granite break up with his girlfriend? Because she took him for Granite. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Natalie Bray, Valerina Davis, and then Mindy Freeman.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Bray. I live in District Eight and have two children in V B C P S. The messages from the majority of speakers at the past four school board meetings didn't seem to reach the hearts and minds of the majority of the school board. We asked you to discard the April eighth resolution and pause changes to the equity policy. Ms. Brown, Ms. Weems, Mr. Bowenstiel, Mr. Callan, Mr. Culpepper, and Ms. Dwyer. I wonder if it's hard to sit through so many speakers with this message when you already know your vote is in opposition. I bet it's not fun to be publicly criticized, called names, and shamed for your choices. Although I'm frustrated by your voting record, at the end of the day, I believe that we are all trying to do what's right. I wish we could have a conversational exchange because talking at you all seems to work against finding common ground. So I'm holding you in the light, which is what Quakers say when we pray for someone. We're also called friends, and we believe that there is that of God in everyone. This is a Christian denomination, just to clear up frequently asked questions. I'm a Quaker, and I'm a follower of Christ, and from what I know of you six, this is a shared belief. So I'll start there. To be clear, I am a firm proponent of separation of church and state. I just have a sense that your personal values may be compelling your school board votes. I'm not here to criticize that. Instead, I ask you to see the alignment between Christian values and the goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We don't need to shy away from these words because of politics. D E I is an extension of Christian teachings with about compassion, fairness, and justice. Diversity. I believe there's an inner light of the divine in every person. God has given us diverse gifts and talents, and our diverse community reflects the beauty of his creation. D E I ensures that all voices are heard and valued. Equity. Equality before God is a central, is central to Christianity and is rooted in the biblical principle of justice. D E I policies seek to create equal opportunities for all. In a just society, everyone should have the opportunity to flourish regardless of their identity. Inclusion. Throughout the Bible, God commands us to care for the marginalized and oppressed. D E I addresses systemic inequalities in our society, whether they are based on race, gender, disability, or other factors. If we are to truly follow Christ's example, we must address injustice and advocate for an inclusive society. Instead of disparaging the term D E I and erasing the words diversity and equity. Can we instead stand together in the realization that D E I brings equality, justice, care, and respect for all in our community? Removal of the words diver- diversity and equity from school policy will cause confusion and insecurity for teachers and students. As a moral and faith-based imperative, I'm asking you to hold on to D E I tonight.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Valerina Davis, Mindy Freeman, and then Heather Syke.
Hello, my name is Valeria Davis. I have, uh, two children, one who graduated from V B schools and one is who is a current freshman. Uh, Callan, Culpepper, Weems, Brown, Bonestill, and Dwyer. Some of you were here two years ago and upheld Governor Youngkin's model policy that stripped rights and privacy from L G B T Q students, like forbidding teachers from using a student's requested name, enforced outing to parents under the guise of parental rights. You all had the foresight that giving a person the respect and dignity of their name is a slippery slope to wokeism and chaos. So congrats again on what seems to be your personal super slide into racism, ableism, and misogyny. Truly, super duper job on continuing to alienate, disenfranchise, and deflate minority and marginalized groups. Protecting money and your political sway. It's always better than protecting people. Thank the gods also that a handful of like-minded speakers argued that schools should focus on reading, writing, and arithmetic, not D E I. Thank you for putting on your lip gloss. It's interesting that history is not mentioned when these people speak, though, right? It's so interesting that there's murkiness about what suspending D E I initiatives means for our students. You all jumped to suspend and remove without letting the public know what any of it meant. Let's talk about the three Rs in a bit of history that draw a line between the need for equity and inclusion and diversity programs in our school. Uh, in clear language that demonstrates that all children have a space and a place and protections. Fifty-one years ago, in nineteen seventy-four, the E C O A Act passed, passed allowing women legal protections to open bank accounts. Idea, idea was passed in nineteen seventy-five. In nineteen sixty-two, two V B schools integrated. Former de- formal desegregation happened in nineteen sixty-nine. The Voting Rights Act in nineteen sixty-five made steps towards banning discriminatory practices in voting. Native Americans gained citis- gained citizenship in nineteen twenty-four. Native Americans gained citizenship. And they still struggle in many places to access voting and overcome barriers to polling. This year, in twenty twenty-five, I visited the site of Lumpkin's Jail, known as the Devil's Half Acre. I kind of stumbled upon it in visiting Richmond with my friends. Literally plopped in a random parking lot next to the trail to Lumpkin's Jail. On cinder blocks was a Winfrey College cottage. That's this, there's no signage, nothing stopping anyone from defacing the building. Let's contrast that with the slave owner and former Chief Justice John Marshall's home, who was well-maintained by docents, easy to find. There's a gift shop there. And this year, twenty twenty-five, my friend is struggling to get a handrail installed at Bayside High School so her son can access the stage with his peers instead of going around the back to get to them. Looking at our history and recognizing that there are systems set up to keep people down and keep them controlled is a direct line to why D E I is so needed and so important. And why blindly following an executive order.
And that is time.
Explain yourself.
Our next speaker is Mindy Freeman, Heather Syke, and then Laura Patton.
For over a month now, you've heard from us so-called liberals, nearly three quarters of the speakers who have spoke, voiced strong support in upholding D E I efforts in our school. We presented facts, data, and personal stories that clearly illustrate why policies like five dash four are so important. And yet, this board keeps tuning us out. So tonight, rather than repeat what's already been said, I'll try something different, a satirical speech. Maybe this will resonate better with a few of y'all. I'm here tonight to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, those feel-good buzzwords dressed up as compassion and progress, but really, just a clever distraction from the important work of maintaining the status quo. Let's be honest, diversity is exhausting. All these cultures, voices, religions, and ideas, it's hard to keep track. And equity, don't even get me started. The idea that some students might need different supports to succeed, huh. Honestly, I'd rather watch my daughter with A D H D and dyslexia struggle than give her the support she needs. Because heaven forbid, she gets something my other daughter doesn't. Fair is fair, right? If one sinks, the other better drown too. And inclusion, what a nightmare. Schools are supposed to prepare kids for the real world. And what better way to do that than by excluding anyone who makes things too complicated? Like kids with different learning needs, languages, or lived experiences. If we, if they start feeling like they belong, what's next? Student input on policy? Madness. So, let's finally listen to Daddy Dares and pull the plug on all things D E I once and for all. Let's bring back the good old days when history was simpler, desks were in a straight row, and everybody knew exactly who didn't belong. Now, real talk. Thank you to Ms. Felton and Mr. Bowenstiel for your vote at the P R C meeting to maintain the current cell phone policy for next year. Which allows high school students to use their phones during one lunch. It's encouraging to think that maybe, Mr. Bowenstiel, you are actually listening and paying attention during your school visits. Keep asking questions, and most importantly, keep thinking independently. Now, Ms. Dwyer, your persistent phone use during school board meetings needs to be addressed. If the chair won't do it, I will. If you're unable to stay off your phone while seated on the dais, perhaps it's time to step down. During the last meeting alone, you were caught on camera no fewer than fourteen times with your phone in your hand. And at one point, you were scrolling for over two minutes straight. What could be so important on your phone that you're looking at it that much during a school board meeting? Your constant fidgeting is not only distracting, but it's a clear lack of interest. Which shows, which is not surprising, given your usual silence. Your constituents in District One and the students of Virginia Beach deserve better from you as a school board member. If you can't do your job, please make way for someone who can. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Syke, Lauren Patton, and then Dr. Rich Gobolchar.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Syke, and I am President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here this evening to speak once more against gutting policy five-four, formerly educational equity. And the removal of the words diversity, diverse, equity, inclusion, and culturally responsive teaching from the strategic frameworks. Contrary to the narrative that is being pushed at the federal level and what many have come to believe, equity is not a focus on equal outcomes. Educational equity is a focus on providing all students equal access to high education, high-quality education and the opportunities to learn. Access. It is the duty of this school board to ensure that every student in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, regardless of background, race, religion, national origin, familial status, zip code, or any other factor, receives the resources and support they need in order to reach their full potential. Need. Because every student has different needs and learning styles, providing equal resources may not be enough to meet their needs. If you've studied any psychology, you've learned of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. When you study education, you learn about Bloom's taxonomy. As an educator, you learn quickly that your students must get through Maslow before they can bloom. Our students come to us on different steps of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And educational equity is about getting students on as even of a playing field as possible so they can all bloom. Per policy four dash six-two, instructional staff in the school division are evaluated on their ability to meet diverse needs of their students. Create inclusive classroom environments, and use the research-based pedagogy of culturally responsive teaching. You cannot vote to remove these components from policy five-four and the strategic frameworks. And then expect staff to still be evaluated using the rubrics that are then out of alignment. No evaluations of instructional staff or any staff member whose evaluation tool has components of diversity, equity, inclusion, or being culturally responsive if you remove these from five-four or the strategic framework. No evaluations. An executive order is nothing more than a suggested course of action from the individual issuing it. It is not law. Federal courts have placed an injunction on enforcement of the certification process. The U S Department of Education. The U.S. Department of Education has also come out and said they will not be enforcing the certification. There is no reason to continue on this path other than it is your full intention to willingly remove diversity, equity, inclusion, and culturally responsive teaching practices. It is okay to change your mind, given new evidence. It is okay to reevaluate what is happening here and where things are going. It is okay to stop and change directions to what is right for V B C P S staff and students.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Lauren Patton, then Dr. Rich Kobachar, and then Jean Fitchew.
Good evening. I'm a parent of a student in this district, and I'm also a proud graduate of this district. I also previously served as the Diversity and Inclusion Committee Chair for my son's P T A. And I'm here tonight because I'm profoundly disappointed and frankly quite disgusted by this body's decision to uphold the suspension of D E I policies in our schools. This district helped raise me. It taught me critical thinking, the importance of community. It helped me understand that every student, regardless of their religion, their identity, their race, their background, or their ability, deserves to be seen and heard and supported in schools. My educational environment helped me to become the person I am, and I want that for my child and every child in this district. Suspending D E I is not just a policy shift, it is a message. It's a message to already marginalized families and students who are just fighting to be heard and merely considered, that their experiences, their culture, their challenges don't matter, unless they're the right type of person. That, my friends, is the language of supremacy. I'm a communications professional, and I can tell you that language matters. You can package this decision and the new language in your policy however you like. You can cross out the scary words and replace them with the safer ones. The fact is that stripping away these policies the way that you plan to do isn't protecting our kids, it is protecting your comfort, and it is protecting power of people who do not care. It's a cowardly decision, and it's one embased in fear. It tells the students who don't fit into your definition of what is normal that their being is less than. It tells them that it is a personal failing and that they are unfit for basic protections. And if that is the message that you're comfortable sending to this community, then I respectfully tell you that you do not deserve to sit in that seat. Your job is to give these kids the things that they need to succeed and feel safe while they learn, and you are failing them. The board's actions haven't gone unnoticed. They've pulled us into the national spotlight and not for the right reasons. We are no longer a community of academic excellence or innovation. We are not a community where people are excited to raise their kids. We are now a tale of what happens when responsibility is overridden by fear. Leadership's about courage, it's about doing what's right, not just what's convenient. And if you're unwilling to stand up for all students, not just the ones that look like your kids or the kids in your neighborhoods or the ones that come from the right households, then you have grossly misunderstood your responsibility to this community. For the members on this board who voted against the suspension, you have my gratitude. Thank you for caring about our children and their futures. And for those of you who continue to uphold this decision, you have my indignation because it is clear by your actions and the language that you choose to enact that you do not care enough.
Our next speaker is Dr. Rich Kobachar, Jean Fitchew, and then Sue Libredo.
For the fourth time, the name is Fnatic Kobachar. Thank you. Just by way of introduction again, I want to remind everybody that I've got a PhD in nuclear chemistry. I've been the chief scientist and engineer for a three-thousand-plus-person business unit, what a billion-dollar-a-year budget, with NASA, NARA, Navy, FEMA, Department of Homeland Security, C D C, N I S T, Department of Education, and the Department of State. But I want to limit my comments today to the revised wording that will come before you. And I had a chance to read it, and I read it in pretty gory detail. And as I read through it, what I noted is that it's loaded with broad platitudes, non-sequiturs, setting of goals and objectives that are not practically achievable, or for that matter, even measurable. Measurable. So I read that, and I'll give a couple examples of that. And I looked at it, I saw all the red marks on it. I actually asked myself, if I wanted to fix this, what I do? And what I got thought was maybe just eliminate the whole document. And if you look at all the red marks that are on it, it comes pretty close to that. So I think the changes are actually very good. One of the changes, I'll just read it. This is what it said. "The school board and the school division are committed to developing a capacity for cultural competence and a commitment to equity and inclusion to enable the fulfillment of core values and lifelong learning competencies." Seriously. That's unadulterated gobbledygook. For that matter, what do we even call cultural competence? And how will fulfillment of its cultural values and lifelong learning competencies ever even be measured? The rest of the document is actually quite worse than that. The revised wording says, "The school board and school division are committed to developing an educational environment that fulfills its core values and lifelong learning competencies." Simple, straightforward, and effective. So this five-page document, we'll make it down to about a page and a half, by my recrimine. I urge you to accept the wording. And in my closing, at my last address before the school board, I noted that as a PhD scientist and not an educator, I had applied for a substitute teaching position. Two days later, I received the call. So I'm now officially a substitute teacher and an educator. I'll be welcoming joining all of you and bringing technical excellence and competency. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Fitchew, Sue Libredo, and then Darrell Clark.
Home is a school where love is learned when a man and a woman commit to be responsible to each other in holy matrimony and to each child who is born into that family. As a father and mother love the child, the transmission of virtues takes place inside each life. They don't just look like the parents, they become like them in motive and behavior. The cerebral cortex doesn't close until age twenty-five. Children are like sponges that absorb the stimulus and knowledge presented and applied. The great miracle of learning begins and continues in the home. The father is a model of propriety, protection, preservation, and provision. The mother is the model of nurture, nourishment, necessity, and need as she meets those demands and cares for her children. The nuclear family is the great engine of socialization, growth, identity, development, and understanding. Without it, the civilization and enculturation stop. In two thousand nine, President Barack Obama stated there are no excuses for minority children not to succeed in his one-hundredth anniversary speech to the N double A C P. One reporter asserted the tone of the speech was passionate, even preacher-like. Mr. Obama told the N double A C P members they had to take responsibility for their lives and their communities. He continued, "Government programs alone won't get our children to the promised land. We need a new mindset, a new set of attitudes." The president asserted African-American communities have internalized a set of limitations and come to expect so little from the world and ourselves. He further stated, "We have to say to our children, yes, if you're African-American, the odds of growing up amid crime and gangs are higher. Yes, if you live in a poor neighborhood, you will face challenges that someone in a wealthy neighborhood will not. But that's not a reason to get bad grades. That's not a reason to cut class. That's not a reason to give up on your education and drop out of school. No one has written your destiny for you. Your destiny is in your hands." You cannot forget that that's what we have to teach our children. Mr. Obama also said that he wanted to see a return to strong parenting and adults taking responsibility for the discipline of all children in their community. He drew on his own experiences of growing up with a single mother, praising her for giving him the choice to make the most of life. Mr. Obama urged a new mindset where African-American children should aspire to become scientists, engineers, judges, and presidents. In conclusion, freedom and opportunity are the twin pillars of success. Teaching your child how to succeed is the duty of every parent by providing that example and encouraging them to achieve every goal.
Our next speaker is Sue Libredo, Darrell Clark, and then Bernita Richardson.
Good evening, board members, Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, and Superintendent Robertson. My name is Sue Libredo, and I live in District Six. My master's is in industrial and organizational psychology, and I'm A B D in the Executive Leadership Doctoral Program in Education at the George Washington University. I'm a thirty-year resident of Virginia Beach and the mother of a child who attended public school here. My professional background includes thirty years of human resources leadership. I have led H R for international chemicals and shipping companies. This includes campus recruiting and the creation of internship programs. I have hired the product of our school system and have coached students on how to get internships and land jobs after college. Like many parents and teachers and students who have spoken lately, I too am concerned over the misappropriation of words with misunderstood operational definitions and the actions taken prematurely by this board. This has left so many astounded, but more importantly, has clearly left students and parents afraid. I also heard fear, vulnerability, and honesty in Dr. Robertson's voice when he openly shared that if the board did not comply with Executive Order one-four-one-ninety, that he might lose his job. This understandably was not a psychologically safe situation for Dr. Robertson. The board took swift action to protect his job and the perceived loss of funding. But when the executive order was delayed, did you not equally hear the fear expressed in the voices of parents, students, teachers, and the community? That fear, that lack of psychological safety is equally important to them. They still fear the threat of what these changes will mean to them. Deferring your actions would have been a win-win for everyone. Psychological safety is the most studied enabling condition in group dynamics and team learning research. It refers to group members believing that they can take risks without being shamed by other members and being accepted and respected. The school board would clearly benefit by collectively recognizing the unnecessary anxiety it has created for so many. The collateral damage of these premature actions has been significant, and in particular, upon the board itself. If only two of you had felt safe enough to give this community what they asked for, the animus would have been diminished and the mental well-being of the students and parents preserved. Going forward, we would like to see this board put the needs of its students first. That includes prioritizing their psychological safety also so that they may focus on what's important: learning. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darrell Clark, Bernita Richardson, and then Melissa Luxon.
There's a Dead Kennedys song called "This Could Be Anywhere" where the lyrics go, "Those new kids at school seem cool, but Dad says not to talk to them. Stick to your own friends, they're not our kind. Now there's lots of fights. So many people I know come of age so tense and bitter-eyed, can't create, so they just destroy." That's what the people who are anti-D I I, that's what kind of environment y'all want for the youth. And a Jimi Hendrix song called "Straight Ahead," he sings, "You got to tell the children the truth. They don't need a whole lot of lies because one of these days, baby, they'll be running things. So when you give them love, you better give it right." But y'all don't show love. Y'all want to erase whole groups of people. And the June twelfth, twenty-twenty-three year resolution that was presented at one A M. by Culpepper basically erased trans youth and queer youth, and y'all's fascism is on wide-open display. You know, I've heard a lot of talk about focusing on rigorous classwork and test scores and all of that stuff. Like, socialization ain't important. Like, for some kids, like, yeah, being at school is like their only respite from their home lives. You know, hanging out with friends, socializing, laughing. For some kids, it is hard to make friends, like, that's, I get that. But like, imagine how much harder y'all are choosing to make it for these students by doing away with D E I. Like, y'all are focusing on the statistics. To do that in an environment without D E I is incredibly damaging to our community. Like, y'all don't see them as humans, you just see them as numbers and employee identification numbers or something. And the future ain't exclusive, no matter how hard y'all try to restrict it. And you won't win. You won't. Like, you really think the youth are going to accept this? Like, I'm not speaking for them, I'm just like, I just, you know, put myself in their position, and I know some young folks, and they're not having this. I'm just saying. You know, you hear them come up here and they speak and whatnot, and y'all say, "Good job," and you give them, you know what I mean? You give them your praise, but are y'all really listening? Like, this is not extra credit for them. Like, this is real. You know, like, y'all look ridiculous. Like, what harm have the youth done to you that led you and leads you to continuously inflict harm on them? Continuously. Like, aside from a good amount of them being anti-what you represent and learning to not be like you and some of your wicked supporters, what harm have they done to you? Answer that.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Bernita Richardson, Melissa Luxon, and then Georgia Allen.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today on two critical decisions facing our school system. The adoption of Option Two for the tri-campus configuration and the proposed resolution to remove D E I initiatives. My name is Bernita Richardson, I live in District Four. I have graduated one student from the system, and I currently have one at Newtown now. I stand in support of Option Two for the tri-campus decision, which proposes consolidating our elementary schools into one for pre-K to first grade and another for second through fifth. I believe the structure offers a practical and effective approach to education, focusing on the developmental needs of our students without the influence of others. I strongly advocate for this Option Two configuration because it allows for the concentration of resources and expertise where they may be used and most impactful. Emphasizes age-appropriate learning environments, allowing educators to tailor instruction to specific developmental stages. The consolidation can lead to more efficient uses of resources, consistent curriculum implementations, and a stronger sense of community among the students and staff. Research underscores the importance of early education in setting the foundation for lifelong learning. Emphasizes domains such as emotional and social developmental language and cognitive growth. Now for the other issue. It bothers me that people want to use quotes out of context, misrepresenting statistics, and creating lies. Education should be a unifying force, focusing on shared values and academic excellence. Conversely, I express strong opposition to the resolution aiming to eliminate D E I programs. These initiatives are not merely administrative processes. They are fundamental to creating an inclusive and supportive education environment for every student. As we've said before, removing D E I risks, marginalizing minority students. My youngest student has an I E P, as he has cerebral palsy, and utilizes many of the sources of educational learning that could be removed. So in conclusion, adopting Option Two for our tri-campus configuration represents a strategic investment in our students. Let us move forward with decisions that reflect our shared commitment and excellence and for the well-being of our students and our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Luxon, and then Georgia Allen.
Good evening. Satire is on the menu tonight, so I've had a change of heart. And tonight, I am full support of your courageous commitment to the law of the land and specifically presidential executive orders issued by President Donald J. Trump. Because it's clear now, we are not bound- Because it's clear now, we are not bound by the U.S. Constitution, state code, or legal precedent. No, we are governed solely by the power of a Sharpie and a signature on White House letterhead, at least when it suits the majority of this board. After watching you gut the VBCPS equity plan and DEI programming with the surgical precision of a sledgehammer, citing President Trump's Executive Order on Race-Based Programming, I assume naturally that all of his executive orders must now be enforceable mandates here in Virginia Beach, which is why I'm confused. Where's the public workshop on Executive Order fourteen one nine zero? The one titled Ending Radical Indoctrination in K- Twelve Schooling? Not to be confused with what brought forth the whole DEI thing, which was the illegal DEI, that was a different executive order anyways. Um, you know, so that's the one that bans radical ideology like acknowledging systemic racism, white privilege, or existence of sexism in American institutions. Um, I mean surely we're due for a comprehensive review of every curriculum poster and hallway conversation in our schools to ensure no one anywhere even feels like they might have learned that racism and sexism is real. We need to call for a vote on the next logical step. Hear me out, appointing a district-wide patriotic education officer. Someone to ensure our children only learn the good parts of American history, like how the founding fathers demanded liberty while literally owning human beings slavery? Well, Ms. Brown, you can call that an early American internship with room and board included. If Trump's executive orders are binding on this board, then y'all are slacking. What's the holdup? Why haven't you passed a resolution declaring the sixteen nineteen project a hate document? Where's the mandate to to replace Diversity Week with Traditional Values Appreciation Day? Actually, why haven't you banned critical thinking altogether? It's a slippery slope from questioning authority to realizing this board has none. So if you're going to pretend Trump's executive orders have legal jurisdiction here and that your own lawyer, not understanding tie votes, is somehow less embarrassing than Rose Dwyer sitting on that dais, then at least be consistent. Or you could admit that this wasn't about law at all. It was about fear, politics, and a deep desire to turn back the clock to a time when equity was optional and ignorance is comfortable. But hey, if you're legislating via Trump Executive Order now, I'd like to formally request you enforce the next one too. EO one three eight three four, Efficient Government Operations, because this board is running like a busted Roomba in a room full of dog poop. Thank you, and God bless whatever version of the law we're pretending to follow this week. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Georgia Allen.
I think they're gonna make me change my speech again. Good evening, I'm Georgia Allen, lifetime resident of Virginia Beach and also a product of Virginia Beach School System. I really wanted to talk about the tri-campus, but I will end it with a little DEI because I just love when white people like to quote Dr. King and President Obama. Oh, they're just right on time every time. Okay, I just love it. But anyway, after attending the community meeting with for the tri-campus allowed me the opportunity to listen to the parents. It also allowed the parents to give their honest input and ask questions with regards to the changes. They were quite astute as they noticed that different tables were receiving different information and different responses for the same questions. And the parents then began to um ask more questions and move around to different tables. And ultimately, we got to the point where we came together and the leaders there decided to come back with more accurate information. So they began to be a little bit more transparent. And so I was glad to be there because I could observe how sometimes the leadership kind of fudged things. Well, they did get on track. But I do want to say that after listening to this to the parents and after them pushing to get accurate information from the school administration, they finally uh were able to make a a good decision, and I listened to them. And so what I strongly believe is that option two is the best option for this community. Um, of course, with the option two for the tri-campus, it allows the um the students not have not to have to worry about zone changing, and I think that's critically important for this community. Um, the other thing that I um that was important, and I'm sorry, I didn't pull my page out first. I I I just still can't get over the white boy, I really can't get over the white boy, I'm sorry. I do apologize. Okay. I like option two because of focus on early childhood development, which I think is going to be extremely important for this particular community. And they know that when they come into K one to the first grade, that they're gonna um be able to have more focused attention. Um, and then when they go to this uh second school, which is grades second through fifth, um, they will now have the um the balance, they also um have the twos that they need to be successful as they move forward. Unfortunately, I can't say a lot about DEI except Dr. King's message. All we say to Americans in Virginia Beach is
And that is time, our next speaker, and that is time, ma'am.
On paper, okay?
We're gonna move to our online speaker, Paula Chang, please unmute.
Hi, I'm unmuted, I think.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Chang.
Okay, thanks. First of all, I have to say I think it's good that all people admire Dr. King or President Obama. Next, I'll say that Ms. Melnick has a very different recollection of board behavior towards minority school board members than and to the public than my recollection. And teachers have long mentored students without DEI in place, and one student spoke well this evening about how much history she learned in the schools without DEI as policy five-four was not put in place until twenty twenty. Yet some board members behave as if proposed changes to policy five-four harm students. And truthfully, five-four as it stands weakens education and society by turning away from solid foundational curriculum needed for success, to instead prioritize social engineering and indoctrination. Some school board members, though, hold town halls, speak on podcasts, publish op-eds, and red herringly threaten lawsuits or potential lawsuits, all to gin up public outrage at the removal of the harmful practices contained in five-four. But these school board members never actually state what it is in five-four that they're fighting so hard to keep. So let's look at it as it currently stands. It says that the school board values diversity in our community and staff. It doesn't say quality of job performance and teaching are valued. It says a diverse work environment is valued towards achieving positive academic and social outcomes. It does not say high-quality educational outcomes were valued. It says the division is committed to developing a capacity for cultural competence and a commitment to equity and inclusion to enable fulfillment of its core values. Whose core values? It defines expectations for consideration of racial and social equity. And five-four provides a prioritization framework to advance educational equity. This is just from the very first paragraph. Nowhere does it address high-quality education. But wait, there's more. Tax dollars are mandated for implicit bias training in culturally responsive teaching and educational practices. It mandates for teacher evals to be addressing culturally responsive teaching practices. It mandates increased DEI in employment practices. Yes, these are the noneducational absurdities in five-four, desperately needing that important red line that these school board members are fighting so hard to keep in place in our schools, and I wonder why. The truth is that parents, no matter the race, creed, gender, or color, send their child to school for education, not indoctrination. And parents hope their child's life will elevate through education and that their child's generation would surpass that of their own parents. This is the American dream, and until schools turned towards this indoctrination, it was the reality as successive generations of children surpassed that of their parents. This dream is no longer a reality, and we are responsible for having allowed this decline. I love Mr. Fitzhugh's message, the words of President Obama. And we must all help students, no matter what the background, with a return to solid educational priorities by adopting the changes to five-four. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, Speaker Two, online Speaker Two is not there, so that concludes our public comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you, and I just want to thank everyone that came out to speak tonight. Um, we value your input and it's important to us. Um, we are now on to interim financial statements, March and April twenty twenty-five, and we welcome Daniel Hopkins, Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, school board members, Dr. Robertson. The overall revenue trend for the month of April is acceptable at this point in the fiscal year, as illustrated by the first graph. The governor did approve the direct aid budget. This includes a bonus of six point five million dollars, which was discussed at the last board meeting. Uh, we are required to have this paid out rapidly, so HR and payroll have this ready to go. We must certify this to the state by May thirty-first, and we plan to have the certification letter out tomorrow, as long as it is approved tonight. Federal revenues are at a favorable level at this point in the fiscal year. Federal impact aid is about fourteen million dollars year-to-date. Other sources of revenue through the month are favorable at this point in the fiscal year. Even though they're favorable to budget, they are down about five hundred thousand dollars compared to last year, mainly due to the stop-arm enforcement program. The next graph shows that the sales tax receipts are on acceptable level. They are up about five hundred thousand dollars from the same time last year. And the last graph shows that the expenditures and encumbrances trend continue to remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. At this point, I'll take any questions.
Since you mentioned the bonus, um, if that's approved tonight, when can our employees anticipate uh receiving that bonus?
We plan to do it on June fifteenth.
June fifteenth, thank you. I've had a few people ask, so. Okay, I don't see any other questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the information for our Citizens Advisory Committee appointment recommendations. Laura Beth, um, she has laryngitis, so I'm gonna go ahead and read them tonight, and if you have any questions, she'll come up and answer those, but um, the recommendations are to approve appointments to the Citizens Advisory Committee for a three-year term beginning July first twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Um, reflecting the outcome of school board discussion and applications as personnel matters during closed session, May thirteenth twenty twenty-five. Uh, we will vote on this for action in our next um school board meeting. I'm just making sure I'm accurate there. Um, the Citizens Advisory Committee for Gifted will be Frances Knight Thompson, Landstown, Melinda Crac- Cracaw, Cox, Ross Kremers, Cox, Harrell Patel, Bayside. Special Education Advisory Committee, Marina Brakesman, Leslie Lancaster, General Advisory Council for Technical and Career, Joseph Frommelt, Hunt Gall, Brian McIntyre, Earline Rocks. And for the School Health Advisory Committee, Leslie Lancaster. Um, so those are the um the recommended appointments, and at this time, is there any discussion? Ms. Rogers.
Uh, did we not get any applications for the schools that are not represented? Still.
Go ahead and excuse my voice, I'm very sorry, and I will isolate this after I'm done. Um, I think what was decided was that it will be opened back up in September for the four schools that do not have anybody there right now.
So then if we appoint these people for three years, how will that then allow for schools that are not represented to become represented?
So when we open it back up in September, we already have a plan in place um to advertise even more than what we do currently, so that way we can get it out. Um, and then y'all would do the same thing as we've done with this group too, that you would have the closed session, then the information, then the consent.
Right, but there's going to be an over-representation from Cox.
Aunt Bayside.
Yeah, so like.
Which is allowed in their bylaws.
Okay, nope.
Dr. Green.
Thank you, and and mine is just more of a comment um directed uh for the listening public, the importance of being able to monitor where we have vacancies. And and so I I thank staff for putting together um an aggressive plan that will help recruit for the rest of the vacancies that we have on the Citizens Advisory Committee for Gifted Ed. And if I'm, I think it's still four positions um that we hope we will get public applicants for. Um, this is your opportunity to have input into processes uh with different committees in our school division.
Thank you, and I I don't expect a response right now, but I appreciate all of your work on this. Um, and I would just ask that as this opens back up, that the school board um get an email or a notification during admin matters um so that we know, especially since we're in districts, to tell our districts, um, we all have social media, as most of us, um, so we can put that out for our districts to try to apply and if they're interested, so thank you. That brings us to salary resolution regarding fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and we welcome Crystal Pate, Chief Financial Officer.
So good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, school board members, Dr. Robertson. The salary resolution and corresponding attachment service the foundational documents for identifying position classifications within Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Human Resources is responsible for preparing these attachments, which define the compensation structures, allowances, supplements, and student activity rates for the division for the upcoming fiscal year. The resolution grants the administration the authority to implement these salary schedules and supporting documents. This evening, we are presenting two salary resolutions for consideration. The first salary resolution reflects the compensation funding approved in the superintendent's estimate of needs, known as the SEON, which was approved by both the school board and city council. Under this scenario, the instructional pay scale provides a two percent increase in the entry-level pay with a one point five percent step increase. The unified pay scale includes a three percent increase in the entry-level pay with a one percent step increase for employees with zero to fourteen years of ex-service and a one point five percent step increase for employees with fifteen-plus years of service. The second salary resolution represents the administration's updated recommendation presented to the board on May thirteenth, following the announcement of additional state funding. This revised proposal modifies the instructional pay scale to increase the entry-level salary by three percent, up from the original two percent, paired with a one point five percent step increase for a total of a four point five percent increase, aligning the instructional pay scale with the unified pay scale approved in the SEON. There are no changes proposed to the unified pay scale beyond what was previously approved. Both resolutions are provided for informational purposes this evening. You are going to be asked to formally approve the second proposed resolution during the action portion of the meeting. The effective date for the approved resolution will be July first, twenty twenty-five, and is contingent upon the board's approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget, also scheduled for action this evening. Once approved, the salary resolution and its attachments become public documents accessible to both employees and the community, and will be posted on the division's website. Funding for the first resolution is already incorporated into the approved fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six superintendent's estimate of needs across various funds and cost centers. Funding for the second resolution is accounted for within the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget that you will be voting on later this evening. Please note that only the school board approval is required for this resolution, city council approval is not needed. So this concludes the presentation, I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
And before I open it up, so like she said, there's two, so if at the end of this, we could um figure out which one we're going to read and vote on, that would be great, Mr. Colibor.
Okay, I think you said it, but I just made sure I uh I was tracking you. Uh, so at a, the uh, the brief you gave at the the previous meeting, you know, where we ran through uh, the funds available, which was roughly thirteen and a half million. The uh, the increase in there uh was two to three percent plus a one point five step, the four and a half, the four and a half percent increase, is that correct?
No, the one that we ran through on May thirteenth was gonna be on the instructional pay scale, the three percent plus the one point five percent step.
Yeah, okay, the total of four point five. That's option two here, correct?
Yes.
And that's what's already incorporated into.
No, what's incorporated in the superintendent's estimate of need is for the instructional pay scale, it's just the two percent for the entry level, and then the one and a half percent. What's in the proposed, which you'll vote on prior to the salary resolution this evening, would be the second option, which is the one you just mentioned.
Okay, so maybe head nods. Option two is the one with the increase from the state. Is everybody okay with us voting on option two tonight? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, okay. All right, so we will move forward with option two on the salary resolution, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we are now on the consent agenda. We have a few, so bear with me. With the Policy Review Committee Recommendations, Policy three dash eight, small women-owned service disabled veterans and minority-owned business participation in school division procurements. Policy three dash three-two, emergency small sole source purchases. Policy five dash one-zero, admissions requirements. Policy six dash seven-three, testing and assessment. B, College Park Elementary School RTU repairs. C, Bayside Middle School Foundation Repair Phase Two. D, Kempsville Middle School Foundation Repair Phase One. E, Salem High School HVAC replacement. F, Division Literacy Plan. And G, federal grant applications. Are there any objections to us voting as the consent agenda as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. But the board isn't working right now. Do we wanna just take a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Culpepper, seconded by Mr. Callen. And I call for the votes to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote on the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have ten ayes and one nay, so the motion did pass for the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. We are on Action fifteen A now, Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. I call for a motion to approve the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Bellinseal. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the May twenty-seventh Administrative and Personnel Appointments.
Mr. Cummings, how do you vote? Thank you, Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, so the motion did pass for the approval of the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson, do you have anything to share?
Yes, thank you. I do have quite a few tonight. We're, we've been a little busy. So I am pleased tonight you've accepted our recommendation for James Dobbs, currently an assistant principal at John B. Die Elementary School to be the next principal at Luxford Elementary School. Congratulations, James. Next up, I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Sarah Mendez, currently an assistant principal at College Park Elementary School to be the next principal at Shelton Park Elementary School. Next up, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Leslie Itner, currently the principal at Plaza Middle School to be the next principal at Ocean Lakes High School. Next, we have Leah Nelson. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Leah, currently an assistant principal at Frank W. Cox High School to be the next principal at Kellum High School. What did it say? Nope, Leah can't go to both places, so go into Kellum. Yeah. Next up, we've, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Tamika S.J., Singletary Johnson is what everybody calls her, currently the principal at Luxford Middle School to be the next principal at Kempsville High School. That makes S.J. going from elementary to middle high school. Next up, I'm pleased that you've brought home one of our own, Anthony Smith, former Green Run High School graduate, currently an assistant principal at Oscar Smith High School to be the next Director of Alternative Education at Renaissance Academy. Next, we have Tasha Weirin, currently a Coordinator in Business and Information Technology in Department of Teaching and Learning, to be the next Director at the Advanced Technology Center. And last but not least is Allison Seikuk, currently a Special Education Program Specialist in Norfolk Public Schools. You've accepted our recommendation to be a Coordinator in Special Education in the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. Thank you. And that concludes our recommendations until next week.
Thank you. We are now on to the strategic framework. There are two votes tonight. A call for a motion to approve the Compass twenty twenty-five changes as presented. Moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Vice Chair Weems. Any discussion? Dr. Green.
I will be voting no to those changes based on the removal of it being diversified and equitable and inclusive of all students and staff.
Ms. Melnick.
I too will be voting no. I mentioned this earlier this evening, that when you participate from home, there's actually a different view, and there's actually a different feel. And last week, last meeting, Mrs. Weems stated that she really didn't care about Compass to twenty twenty-five because that was going to be expiring in a couple weeks, the changes. We can't worry about the changes that have been done because that's expiring, and we're moving on to twenty thirty. And so, I've been home sick in bed for almost three weeks, and I've done a lot of reading and a lot of researching. There was so much work done on the gutting of, of our strategic plan for twenty twenty-five. So much gutting for a document that was getting ready to expire. And that gutting was directed by whomever on this board. It was taken off the wall. It still looks horrible up there, but we have nothing hanging up there. But the gutting of that had to be done because all of the language removed from twenty to twenty-five is exactly what's not in twenty thirty. And, you know, I, I listened to so many people speak this evening, last school board meeting, the school board before that, the hundreds of emails that we've received from families, families in our community who have spoken in favor of our strategic plans and our policy that protect all children. Parents, families that have come, and I'm gonna listen to those families, especially the ones that identified themselves as, as parents. Not so much the people who really don't have. They don't have a dog in life. And so I'll be voting against twenty twenty-five, and while I appreciate all the work that was done on twenty thirty, I'm gonna vote against that too. I think what is happening is a shame. It's so sad. And I, I, I just want to remind that, so I don't have to speak on, on the policy. You have no idea how this is going to affect the students and the families in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And I want to remind you that, once we take these steps with our Compass to twenty thirty and Policy five dash four, we're gonna have to hold the line. And anything that might be considered DEI, we're not going to be able to do. And we don't get to arbitrarily decide what we want to fit in there. Oh, no, 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 but that's okay. We can do that. We're not gonna be able to do anything. If we get rid of it, we get rid of it. And that's gonna be the most difficult part of this step. We should have waited, but here we are.
Ms. Dwyer.
Yes, I just wanted to make clear that the modifications are not just cosmetic, correct?
Dr. Robertson, do you wanna answer that?
Can you give a little further explanation about what you mean by cosmetic?
That they're, they will be in place and ongoing.
The changes that we made in Compass twenty twenty-five and Compass twenty thirty are in line with the resolution that was passed, to be in line with Executive Order one four one nine zero.
Okay, I just wanted to have that clarified and spoken tonight, so we're all clear on that. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper.
I got a question for you too. So when, when does twenty twenty-five expire?
June thirtieth.
Is it possible to make twenty thirty effective tomorrow? Would we pass it today? I'll, I'll tell you why I'm asking that. I mean, I, I'm looking at twenty-five, and I tend to agree that it's, you know, it's just cut. There's nothing added. There's no, there's no effort to reframe what is in here in the way we want it framed. In short, there's no effort to edit twenty-five. It expires in a month. It's a waste of time to really try. So all the effort was put into twenty thirty. What I think makes more sense here is to delete twenty-five and put twenty thirty in place right now.
Let's let you, are you aware, I know we have to have a operating strategic framework.
Which is why I say.
In place, right.
I think you can choose the time period as long as you have one in place. That would change your motion. You're gonna have to change the motion to make that effective.
Yeah, I'll make a motion here as long as, as long as it's possible to do that.
So Compass twenty twenty-five had six goals and various strategies. Compass twenty thirty has five goals and various strategies. There is alignment because we're building off of previous plans, but they are not exactly the same. So there are some things that, within Compass twenty thirty, that, that are gonna be new things we introduce that aren't gonna be ready for primetime until August, because we'll be preparing and sharing rollout plans with our administrators in the summer leadership conference, and then with Department of Teaching and Learning staff in their August conference. So I, I don't want anybody to think that if we pass on twenty twenty-five and, and vote on twenty thirty that all of the things that are in twenty thirty are going to be implemented before we're gonna be ready, which is, our plan is we'll be ready in August.
I would certainly make that motion with that expectation. Obviously, it's also, it's a Compass to twenty thirty. There's no, there's no expectation it's all gonna happen overnight, at least not in my mind, but rather this is a vision for the next five years of service. So Madam Chair, I'd make an alternate motion to remove Compass to twenty twenty-five and make Compass to twenty thirty effective tomorrow.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to remove Compass to twenty twenty-five and make Compass to twenty thirty effective immediate, well, tomorrow. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Dwyer. We'll give Ms. Tonyato a little bit of time to type that in. And while we're doing that, Ms. Rogers, are you speaking to Mr. Culpepper's motion?
Sure, it's kind of yes. I think what the board has to remember is that the decisions we make here, the trickle-down effect to our staff is important. We can't just take an entire framework that takes, what, an entire year to create and just switch it. Every single staff member, every single school, every single administrator, these frameworks are what drives the curriculum. This isn't just a, meh, I changed my mind. We can't do that and expect our staff to deliver the high-quality education that we want. These things actually drive our instruction, these frameworks, and switching them after an entire year, it, it's not going to do what you want it to do because it's not possible to. And I apologize to Dr. Robertson if I'm speaking over, but I absolutely understand from a teacher's perspective when what happens here creates absolute chaos in the classrooms because we've made a decision and nobody knows what to do because it's so overly complicated to do what this board is asking. And that's what we're doing right now. We are asking our administrators in our school buildings and the teachers in the classrooms to make a pivot that is so far left or right, whichever you would like to call it, that they're not gonna be able to accomplish in the last few weeks what you think you want it to do. Which is why, while the effort may not have been what you wanted into Compass to twenty twenty-five, it makes sense that we have a few weeks left to allow the staff to do what is planned already as far as the curriculum, as far as what they're doing, as far as the instruction, than to spend the next few weeks in chaos, not knowing if what they're doing is what they're supposed to be doing, and then they wind up not being able to deliver what we want. Do we want high-quality instruction, or do we wanna keep changing our mind on them and leave them in chaos? These decisions matter, and I'm speaking from experience, being in the classroom only three years ago, that when these kind of decisions are made and, and a sharp turn is expected, it can't always happen the way you want. I, I taught through twenty twenty. I know how it is. So I really, really think we have to truly think about whether or not it is that important to get rid of twenty twenty-five tonight, and I'll yield.
Dr. Green.
I'm also speaking as an educator and having been on that side of the table. I'm very disappointed about the motion that's on the floor because here we are, less than six weeks to the end of the school year, students have received guidance and instruction based on the current framework in our strategic plan. So now we're gonna just throw it all out, have teachers to have to redo things with less than thirty days of school left. That is not fair. To reiterate, ditto to everything Mrs. Roger has said. No, we should not have to just disregard the twenty twenty-five strategic framework.
Mr. Cummings.
I will not be supporting this motion. My concerns are, just hearing the motion on, on the fly, I'm curious what would be impacted on the day-to-day operations. I don't think we've done any measure of impact study. We're in the midst of SOLs, you know, we're in the midst of a busy school time right now, graduation, trying to get kids to succeed and dare I say, finish strong. Strategic vision guides us. It helps us, you know, establish our values, establish our, our true north in our day-to-day operations. And I feel like a whimsical decision. a whimsical decision to quickly eliminate it without knowing impact. I mean, I haven't even had time to read through and think through and could do a comparative analysis of A to B of what potential impact would be within the final three weeks of school. Um, I just can't support that emotion. Think it's very rushed and I'm trying to understand the framework for what led to support.
Mr. Culpepper?
Well, honestly, you're all making my point. The, the things that are removed from twenty twenty-five, as it's written here, if we were to approve it uh, as written with these uh, things removed from it, I think that is a big course change. It's not worth making. Twenty thirty is already in the hopper. Twenty thirty, art, people already have an idea what's in it. The changes to it are more in clarity than in changing what is intended to happen. So you know, what, you kind of asked the question. I'll, I'll repeat the question. What changes in there? What's gonna change in the curriculum tomorrow? If we make twenty thirty effective instead of twenty twenty-five effective?
So we have twelve school days left. Thirteen, if you count that last Friday, which is a half day with, so twelve and a half days left. Uh, schools are in the absolute middle of S O L testing at all three levels. Um, both strategic frameworks have a, their, their first goal is around educational excellence. And this is, this is the work of educational excellence. This, what happens over the next two weeks is gonna be viewed by uh, the public and viewed by our staff whether or not we were successful this year. Um, so the answer to your question, Mr. Culpepper, is I don't think much will change between now and the end of the school year because we are in the we're in auto-drive right now. We know what we're doing in terms of um, working with, with children, finishing up the content within the curriculum, getting us to the end of the school year. I think probably the thing that uh, frustrates me the most is there are school divisions in this country that have a strategic framework that sits on a shelf. And it is only lifted every five years. And then there's good work done, and then it sits on a shelf. Jim Merrill started this process in two thousand seven with Compass Development and Compass twenty fifteen and then twenty twenty and it's to where we are now, where this is a living document that drives everything that we do. Uh, we created a long time ago, before anybody else did, we created what we used to call uh, and Ms. Williams, correct me if I'm, key academic measures is what we called them early on? Because we were going to report to the public how we were doing. We, we were bold. We said, this is what our plan is. This is what we're going to report and we're gonna bear ourselves to the public. And in, in some instances, we were very proud of our work. In other instances, we had to go back to the drawing board. And so my fear is, even though on, on, on face value, it seems to make sense, my fear from a staff point is, for those of us who have lived this plan for five years, there is no closure. It is, it fell by the wayside and we're going to the next plan. It's almost like, you know, we didn't have the proper burial. And that's not the right term, but the, of, of, of the ending of the plan. And so, you know, I, it is not going to change what we do over the next twelve days if, if the decision is to suspend Compass twenty twenty-five and initiate Compass twenty thirty. There will be a reverberation in terms of the people that have lived that plan for five years and, and really wanna measure whether or not that worked, which we could do anyway. It's just
Okay, so I'm ready.
I'll take care of it.
Well, hang on.
Yeah.
What, what I hear you saying is uh, nothing significant will change, but nonetheless, you would rather not rescind twenty-five? That's what I hear.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, with the board's permission, I rescind my motion.
Okay. So we need um, Ms. Dwyer to agree and we have to vote since our bylaws um, say that we have to vote on removing that motion. So, Ms. Dwyer, are you okay with that? Okay, so um, Madam Clerk, do you think that we can just, do you need to edit the voting board? Or? Okay, um, and while um, while she's doing that, we are well, I guess we can't discuss the next thing. So, Ms. Melnick, are you um, planning to talk about? I, I, I guess I'm, we'll probably just wait until the board is adjusted because we're rescinding, so.
Men and Chair, you added it to the end. A men to remove slash resend.
Okay. All right, um, since Ms. Felton's in line, Ms. Felton, are you speaking to the motion to remove Mr. Culpepper's motion?
Yes, I was, but I still wanna speak.
So after we vote to remove his, we can, we're going back to the original motion, is that?
Sorry.
All right. So you would be next in line. Um, Ms. Melnick? Um, do you, okay. Um, go ahead, Ms. Melnick.
What am I allowed to say?
So we're, we're just voting on Mr. Culpepper removing his motion. Um,
I'll, I'll just wait so I can see what I need to say without being interrupted.
All right, thank you. All right. Seeing no more discussion on that, the voting board is open to remove Mr. Culpepper's motion.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. So the motion did pass to remove the original motion, the substitute motion by Mr. Culpepper.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate my colleague's grace in following me along in that one. Ms. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Um, my wording would have been, this is such a hypocritical hypocrite action taken by my colleagues to move forward with this. It's hypocrite because we always talk about students first, parents first, and just like Superintendent spoke, before we tried to do anything that's gonna make a major change within our school division, we tried to let the public know so that they understand and that they can speak on it. Clearly, clearly. Miss, uh, my colleague put forth this uh, and it's, it's dropped because they do have the votes. I understand that. But I'll say this, anything rushed, it always have an after effect. And I'm hearing my colleagues say, you know, we've changed the uh, diverse, education diversity uh, policy. Uh, we, we changed the strategic plan, but there would be no change. Hypocritical. Every time we do something, a rush change that was, was tried to be put forth, it breaks that mold of that educational excellency that we have. It breaks that trust with the parents that we had and with our students. It might be something that you're looking at far off, um, I won't be here to deal with it or, or whatever's gonna happen. But the students will remember how you put their lives in shambles, not understanding your quick, fast, deliberate move on the things that we've done so far. And things that have been halted. An executive order that is no longer in action, it's halted, we still moved. Things that have been halted. I'm just concerned that uh, we aren't as concerned about the job that we were voted in to do to govern the school board and to protect our students. We're doing everything in such a rush. What is the rush all about? Remember, anything done in a rush mantle, in a rush manner, it sets forth other things that happen and to crumble. And I do not want this division to crumble, but look like it is with the things that we are doing haphazardly. Being hypocrites at what we are saying, student first, parents matter, public should speak. That's not what we're doing now. We're just moving on a whim. That's what we believe in. Let's think about it. Try to inject, and I'll say it again, your moral compass. Where is that? Where does it lies? What is enough is enough.
Ms. Melnick?
So actually, Dr. Robertson, you used the, the right term, the burial. Because I was, this is exactly what I was gonna say. Compass to twenty twenty-five should have just been left alone to die a natural death on thirty June twenty twenty-five. But instead, somebody directed Dr. Vankey to go through and butcher a document that guided this division, these students, these families, all of the stakeholders in Virginia Beach. It guided them for five years. It was good work done by a committee of people. And it was good work. Look what you saw tonight. Look at our student up for a, a presidential scholarship. All of our music students, the accolades, every, every school board meeting that we have. This is a high-performing school district that was guided by a really fantastic Compass to twenty twenty-five. And I'm gonna say it again. And it was ripped off the wall like a dirty picture. And there it still sits empty. Twenty thirty has changes. Those changes could have, that's what we should be voting on. Twenty twenty-five shouldn't be on here. This is a colossal waste of time. It is an embarrassment to this school division and to our community. A colossal waste of time. We shouldn't even be voting on the removal of twenty twenty-five. Let it die a natural death in thirty-five days.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, um, I call for the votes to approve the changes to Compass twenty twenty-five as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have six ayes and five nays, so the motion did pass.
Thank you. We are now on to the changes to Compass twenty thirty. I call for a motion to approve the changes to the Compass twenty thirty as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Culpepper, any discussion? Mr. Cummings?
Just to be brief and to remind the public, things that are happening in Compass to twenty thirty that are being changed. Remove the equity emphasis heading from under each goal. Remove the reference to monitoring multiple sources of data and addressing disparities in Goal Two. Replace the word diverse with the phrase a wide range in Goal Two, Three, and Four. Um, remove the reference to a diverse workforce in Goal Three. Remove the reference to a workforce reflective of our student demographics in Goal Three. Remove the word equitable from Goal Five. Remove the definition for equity from the framework document. When I think about I mean, if you just get on old Google and just Google equity and K-12 education research, you're gonna be granted, you're gonna look on, you know, you should go to Google Scholar. We'll get you the peer-reviewed articles. Uh, but you go to Google's, call Scholar and just look at the, the amount of research on this topic and why it is successful in schools. This is not a research-backed decision. It's not backed by academia. And that's why I think what frustrates me. We are an educational-based institution that should be making decisions based on what education research says. Um, and I am disappointed that this reads more as political than I do think it reads as a drive forward based on what is evident by education. Further, it being justified as under the guise of these policies from the executive, the executive order that's being challenged in court that, and I quote, "The Trump-appointed judge is" nonsense, that the terms are so ill-defined that it could potentially violate our student First Amendment rights. And I'm always concerned about how that conversation in the N A A C P case has not found more way to uh, the dais into our thoughts. Uh, and I'm a little dis, I'm a little concerned that we are so easily adapting something that has great questions and objections to um, the policy. So I will not be supporting this, uh, these changes at twenty thirty. I've read Orwell. I'm well-aware of what Newspeak means when we start making up words like a wide range and diverse. Uh, just totally reminds me of that book and uh, it's just kinda interesting to see that played out. So I will not be voting for these changes.
Ms. Rogers?
Thanks. I wanna second what my colleague just stated. And also, just reiterate, I'm a mother first, an educator second, and this affects my children. They are still in these schools. And there are very few of you that have children still in these schools. But my kids are still gonna be there all the way through, almost to twenty thirty, actually through twenty thirty. And I want my children to have a diverse learning experience because it matters to me that they can grow up from their education and be able to go into a diverse city and know how to communicate with people who are not just like them. It's important to me. It's important to a lot of people in the city that their children don't just know exactly what's in their own bubble. That they understand, when I walk out of Virginia Beach and go to college, maybe somewhere else. Maybe I get a job somewhere else. That I'm not gonna be embarrassed by my own ignorance because the people who are in charge wouldn't let me learn about diversity because they didn't believe in it. This is why I'm not gonna support this. I want my children to have a quality education and that includes diversity. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, I call for the votes to approve the changes to the Compass twenty thirty as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have six ayes and five nays, so the motion did pass.
Thank you. Uh, we are now on to tri-campus planning. Um, there is two separate um, options here. So I um, I guess I call for a motion on option one first. Um, I call for a motion to approve option one to pre-K through fifth-grade schools for the reconfiguration of the tri-campus schools.
Chair, I did a quick, one of, I don't know what question, but our board says is the amended budget resolution on the, on the screen, the voting, another thing right here, our computer in front of us. Does that matter?
It hasn't historically, but that's a question for our clerk. Ms. Tonyato, the screen says that we are on the budget.
Hold on one second. Mine does not. Mine shows tri-campus planning.
So, Ms. Tonyato, I've actually seen this happen several times. That's um, so if you haven't had any issues recording minutes in the past and my board colleagues are comfortable with me restating what the motion is, um, I, I would suggest that we move forward and perhaps um, work that out. No, we still have the voting board. It's just that sometimes the voting board is saying something different than what we're actually voting on, but I al, I always say what we're voting on. Um, so anyway, at this time, um, we need a motion on option one because there's two um, separate votes related to this um, before we can open the floor for discussion. Is there a motion to approve option one? Moved by Mr. Culpepper, seconded by Ms. Dwyer, Dr. Green?
So mine um, is a question. I don't know if it goes to staff or Ms. Lanetti. Um, we did Um, we did a community survey. And. That indicated that the community. Was in support of option two. So my question is. Why are we still voting on option one?
Because it was proposed in your agenda as one of the, you had to pick one or the other. The community doesn't set your agenda, you set your agenda. So you've just chosen one right now to go forward on a vote on. If you don't approve this, you will go to the next one. Or you could have not gotten a, the motion second on this option, which would have moved you to your second option. Again, the community, I. You know, the community, um, voting on that are pretty input for you is not the same thing as setting your agenda. So you were given two options to go forward and consider. You've been asked to. Pick one of them right now. So your first one up right now is whether you want option one or not. So. If you don't vote for this, then you would move to option two.
And, and I, I can provide some clarification there. Um, when we had our school board meeting, there was not six school board members that stated. One way or another, and so. Both were brought forward. At that time, I did try to get, um. Enough information to determine. Which one. The board majority would support. Um, we did not have that information at the time. So that is why there's two options here, um. And. I have my comments, but Ms. Rogers, go ahead.
Um, we just did though, option one and option two for the salary, and we kind of all agreed on which option we were gonna support. So I kind of feel like that we could have given this the same consideration where, you know. Especially since we did hear community input, um, that if we were gonna. Like, I don't know, I just feel like we could have. Handle it the same way where colleagues, are we gonna support this or whatever? I. It just seems.
Point of inquiry. I don't, I mean, rep you other than to say, I just think. I motion for this just so we could start the discussion. We gotta vote on one and then figure out what we're gonna do, but as far as I'm concerned, we've just started the discussion so we can have it and we'll get this vote out of the way and go to the next one.
And, and actually, um, I'm gonna go ahead and share, um, as I mentioned in the last meeting, and we did have this on information. The salary resolution was new to information. Again. There was not six board members that signaled a preference, and so. Um, that was why I do not support option one unless option two fails. If option two does not pass, then, um. I would support one as a second option. So I will not be voting for option one. I call for the vote to approve option one for tri campus. Planning.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have no affirmative votes. We have ten nays and we have one abstention, so option one did fail.
Thank you. I now move on to requesting a motion to approve option two tri campus planning. Moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Ms. Melnick.
Um, so I'm in favor of option two and, um, what the community has decided. Uh, but I do think it's ironic that. A few people weighed in on option two. We had a, we had a meeting for the community. Uh, and some people showed up, um, some people came and spoke. Um, and we as a board are gonna listen to the community. Yet, we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who spoke out. Against the E I and we didn't listen to a word they said.
Ms. Dwyer, we're discussing the motion for, um, tri campus planning. Is your comment related to tri campus? Can't do that, sorry. Okay. Um, Dr. Green.
So I am the school board representative for District Four. Um, and I first would like to thank the community who did provide their input. Um, I'm also speaking as a seasoned educator. Uh, what we are doing right now at the tri campus is working well developmentally for our students. I also ask my colleagues to be reminded that. We have unique needs in District Four. Uh, we have the only Title One Middle School as well. So please keep all of that information and think about the great things that are already happening. Uh, at the tri campus. Thank you.
So I'm gonna share, um, my rationale here. You know, when we started the tri campus. Um, discussion and planning. Betty F. Williams. As it stood, didn't look like it was going to be able to get an updated learning environment. Um, this is part of a solution that came about. Um, I think that it's. A great solution. Um, the end goal was to make sure again that Betty F. Williams students got a. Updated learning environment and, um, this accomplishes that. So I am going to support option two. With that, I call for the vote to approve option two to tri campus planning.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes and one abstention, so the motion did pass for option two.
Thank you. We are now on to fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Amended budget resolutions. Um, so I will call for a motion. For the operating budget fiscal year twenty five, twenty six resolution. Vice Chair Williams will need to read after that. Um, the motion was made by Dr. Green, seconded by Vice Chair Williams. Vice Chair Williams, would you please read the motion?
Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach approved the fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six school board proposed operating budget on May eleventh. Twenty twenty five. And whereas the budget amendments adopted by the twenty twenty five General Assembly Conference Budget. Adopted its final change for the twenty four, twenty six biennium affecting pre K through twelve public education. And whereas Governor Yonkin signed the amended Virginia State Budget on May second, twenty twenty five. Providing additional state funds to the school board of the city of Virginia Beach in the amount of thirteen million, five hundred eighty five thousand and sixty nine dollars. And whereas the FY twenty five, twenty six school board proposed operating budget was adopted by city council on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And whereas the city of Virginia Beach has previously appropriated thirteen million, eight hundred sixty five thousand, four hundred fifty eight dollars. For the school board proposed operating budget as part of the approved FY twenty five, twenty six budget. And an additional appropriation is necessary in the amount of two million, six hundred ninety four thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars from the city of Virginia Beach. For additional state money received for special add-on. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has a need to complete the new phone system replacement. At remaining locations to improve communication, infrastructure and operational efficiency. And the cell tower has available fund balance that can be allocated to support this upgrade. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach anticipates an increase in athletic fund revenues as a result of recently approved. Ticket price increases for athletic events. And the appropriation will support an increased coaching supplement. And whereas the Green Run Collegiate Charter School has reduced staffing through an elimination of a position. And an adjustment is necessary to decrease the appropriation to the Green Run Collegiate Charter School. To align with the revised expenditure needs. And whereas appropriations of funds must be approved by the city council. Prior to the expenditure of funds by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach. And now therefore be it resolved. That the school board of the city of Virginia Beach requests an additional appropriation of two million, six hundred ninety four thousand and nine hundred twenty nine dollars. From the city council of Virginia Beach for the school board operating budget. In addition to previously appropriated thirteen million, eight hundred sixty five thousand, four hundred fifty eight dollars on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And be it further resolved that these funds will be used to provide additional special education support. A one percent increase above the two percent increase previously approved. To the instructional experience based step by scale, entry level salary and additional pay-go funding. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach requests an additional appropriation of. One million, nine hundred fifty three thousand, one hundred twenty seven dollars. From the available fund balance of the cell tower fund. In support of the new phone system replacement implementation at remaining locations. And be it further resolved, the school board of the city of Virginia Beach requests an additional appropriation of one hundred sixty two thousand, one hundred dollars. From the anticipated increase in athletic fund revenues. Resulting from approved ticket price increases for athletic events. With all additional funds designated to support coaching supplements. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach requests a decrease in the amount of fifty six thousand, three hundred fifty six dollars. Into the Green Run Collegiate Charter School Fund due to a position reduction. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach approves and affirms the necessary appropriation. And recommended uses of these funds. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the school board. And the clerk of the school board is directed to deliver copies of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the city council, the city manager. And the city clerk adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twenty seventh day of May, twenty twenty five.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve operating budget fiscal year twenty five, twenty six resolution.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for the, um, bud, for the budget resolution for twenty five, twenty six.
Thank you. Um, we are now on to capital improvement program fiscal year twenty five, twenty six through fiscal year twenty twenty, thirty one. Resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt this as presented? Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Vice Chair Williams, would you please read the motion?
Whereas the mission of Virginia Beach City Public Schools in partnership with the entire community is to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is responsible, productive. And engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan. And school improvement priorities to guide budgetary decisions. And whereas the primary funding source of the capital improvement program are charter bonds, public facility revenue bonds and reversion funding. And whereas the city school revenue sharing policy provides forty six. Point seventy five percent of certain general fund revenues to meet obligations of the school board of the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas the city school revenue sharing policy allocates funds first to debt service. While the balance is used for the operating budget and the C I P. And whereas an additional four million, nine hundred fifty four thousand, seven hundred forty one dollars. From the originally approved budget will be allocated in the form of schools pay as you go, pay-go funding. With a corresponding reduction in authorized but unissued public facility revenue bonds. And whereas the school board has comprehensively reviewed all sources of funding. Projected various scenarios and prioritize the need of the operating and C I P budgets. And whereas total project cost, new construction amounts are partly based on twenty twenty three educational specification. Post thirty percent design created with school board input. And whereas educational specifications and the associated designs will be reviewed under a separate process with the school board. Which may result in a change in square footage and cost. And whereas new construction projects will not go out for bid without school board approval separate from the C I P. And now therefore be it resolved. That the school board of the city of Virginia Beach adopts a C I P program of eight hundred seventy million, four hundred nine thousand, two hundred thirty nine dollars. As shown in the attached school board funding summary and project summary dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this school board. And the clerk of the school board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the city council, the city manager. And the city clerk adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this step, twenty seventh day of May, twenty twenty five.
Any discussion? Um, so I do have some. I am going to support this, um. The reason I'm going to support it, um, I did not vote for the public that was not here when the C I P vote took place. I did not support our C I P, uh, previously. I do not agree with the costs associated. I do not agree with specifications. I do not agree with the order. I don't agree, um, with us not having a happy, happy medium. For our energy performance and our HVAC and, um, progress on. New buildings. However, I do agree. With increasing pay-go and for that, I am going to support this today. Um, so with that, I call for the votes to approve. The. Capital Improvement Program fiscal year twenty five, twenty six through fiscal year twenty twenty thirty one resolution as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes and one nay. So the motion did pass for the capital improvement program FY twenty five, twenty six through FY twen- uh, twenty. Thirty thirty one, um, resolution as presented.
Thank you. We are now on to the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five bonus resolution. Vice Chair Williams, oh, hold on. Do I have a motion in a second? To approve the bonus resolution as presented. Moved by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Vice Chair Williams, would you read the resolution?
Whereas the FY twenty twenty four, twenty five operating budget was adopted by the city council on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. And whereas the city of Virginia Beach's adopted budget ordinance appropriated funds to the school board of the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas the budget amendments adopted by the twenty twenty five General Assembly Conference Budget for the twenty four through twenty six biennium. Affecting pre K through twelve public education includes a provision for one-time bonus payments. To promote retention among, among instructional and support positions in public education across the Commonwealth. And whereas the governor, Governor Yonkin signed the amended Virginia State Budget on May second, twenty twenty five. Providing additional state funds to the school board of the city of Virginia Beach in the amount of six million, five hundred eighty four thousand, three hundred twenty six dollars. And now therefore be it resolved, these funds will be used to provide a one-time bonus of six hundred fifty dollars to all. Full-time equivalent employees as of June first, twenty twenty five. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach approves and affirms the necessary recommended uses of these funds. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. Adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twenty seventh day of May, twenty twenty five.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five bonus resolution as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for the FY twenty four, twenty five bonus resolution.
Thank you. We are now on to salary resolution fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And, um, during the information portion, we got a lot of head nods for option two, so. Um, Vice Chair Williams will read the. Last resolution of the night.
Uh, we need a Madam Chair, we need.
But we need a motion in a second first. Thank you. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Culpepper, Vice Chair Williams.
Whereas the mission of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools in partnership with our entire community is to ensure that each student is empowered with the knowledge and skills. Necessary to meet the challenges of the future. And whereas the school board has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan and school improvement priorities to got, to guide budgetary decisions. And whereas the proposed FY twenty five, twenty six operating budget includes a three percent increase to the entry level pay. And a one point five percent step increase for all eligible employees and allocated benefited. Positions earning an additional year of experience on the instructional experience based step pay scale. And whereas the proposed FY twenty five, twenty six operating budget includes a three percent increase to the entry level pay. And a step increase for all eligible employees and allocated benefited. Positions who are earning an additional year of experience on the unified experience based step pay scale as follows. Employees with one through fourteen years of experience will receive a one percent step increase. And employees with fifteen or more years of experience will receive a one point five percent step increase. And whereas the alphabetical listing of instructional positions, instructional experience based step pay scale. Unified experience based step pay scale, part-time temporary hourly rates, table of allowances. High school department chairs, non-athletic supplements, athletic supplements and student activity rates titled below. As shown in the attachments are approved and will be effective as shown below. And whereas the percentage of compensation increases and the effective date of the increases are shown below. Attachment A, alphabetical listing of instructional positions. Attachment B. Attachment B, instructional experience-based step pay scale. Attachment C, unified experience-based step pay scale. Attachment D, part-time temporary hourly rates. Attachment E, table of allowances. Attachment F, high school department chair supplements. Attachment G, non-athletic and athletic supplements. Attachment H, student activity rates. All seven, one twenty-five. Now therefore let it be resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach adopts this adopts the salary scales and the compensation increases as outlined in this resolution and attachments adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the salary resolution fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, option two as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for the salary resolution FY twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you. We are now on to budget transfers. I call for a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer. Need a second. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bowen Steele. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the budget transfers as presented. Mine isn't letting me vote.
Would you like to vote?
I vote yes.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for the budget transfers.
Thank you. We are now on to um policy five dash four. I call for a motion to approve policy five dash four as presented. And the, it's not letting us put it in anymore, Regina. So moved by Mr. Culpepper. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Dwyer. And and Ms. Rogers.
Yes. So earlier tonight, I said that I couldn't approve the agenda because we didn't follow procedure, and I looked at our bylaws, and bylaw one dash three-two states, when policies are submitted to the School Board for consideration, they shall first have been reviewed by a member of the school administration designated by the superintendent and familiar with or responsible for the aspect of the school operations affected by the policy. Dr. Robertson, did you see the redlined policy?
I have now seen it, yes.
But did you see it as it was, when it was prior to being presented to uh the PRC?
Not prior to pre- being presented to the PRC.
Okay, thank you. The proposed adoption amendment repeal or suspension will have the signature of the person submitting the amendment. Um, in the PRC meeting, Mrs. Lynetti stated, Mrs. Williams and I worked on this on Monday to see if we could come up with some suggestions that would be workable. So what you'll see is a significant amount of, if not so much a rewrite, but a strikeout on this. Mrs. Lynetti, you said you and Mrs. Williams worked on this, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But Mrs. Williams's signature is not on any of the changes, and that is per bylaw one point one dash three-two. Furthermore, it says in this bylaw, in the event the policy is recommended by school administration, the administrator reviewing the policy shall sign the policy approved for content and date the signature. Dr. Robertson, did you date this at all and sign it?
I did not.
Okay. The superintendent or designated may also represent to the School Board or a committee thereof that the policy is approved for content. Approving for content indicates that the school administration agrees that the policy is workable for the school division. Dr. Robertson, did you state whether or not this was workable for the school division? On the policy. It says approving the content indicates that this policy is workable for the school division. So you did state that you did not sign that it was approved for content, correct?
Yeah, I, correct. I did not sign to approve the content.
I therefore would like to make a motion to send this back to the PRC so that it can comply with our bylaw one dash three-two.
We have a motion from Ms. Rogers to send the policy back to the PRC. Is there a second? And um also, Ms. Lynetti, can you weigh in on this, please?
I believe your August, August, your April eighth resolution specifically overrode that directing us what to do, which was to bring recommendations back from the PRC and to men, the other things that you have to.
But our bylaws are like our constitution. Everything is supposed to go by the bylaws. So our resolution, if it does, I mean, we, this is what we have to do is per our bylaws in the PRC. It doesn't matter whether or not it went to PRC. When it comes to PRC, these have to processes have to be done per bylaw one dash three-two. It's fine that you brought it, but it didn't follow the procedures, so I'm sending it back so we can s- follow the procedures.
Again, we followed the resolution as directed to us on April eighth. Your motion now is that you believe it's inconsistent, and that will be something the board has to vote on.
Okay, so is there a second to Ms. Rogers's motion? You second Ms. Rogers's motion? Any discussion on Ms. Rogers's motion to send this back to PRC? Mr. Bowen Steele.
So I'm just trying to get this clear. Um, we can continue to vote on this, and we're not breaking any bylaws or anything, or sh- I'm just trying to figure out what's.
I believe your resolution of April eighth overrode, it was very direct. Your April eighth resolution overrode what your normal processes are and directed us to bring the policy back to the PRC, and then you passed it up, um, PRC voted up to the School Board, so it's now before the School Board.
Vice Chair Williams?
Um, yes, as our legal has advised us, we did follow proper procedure um because of the resolution and the direction there from the resolution, so I will not be voting to send this back. We voted last week not to send it back. I will not vote to send it back this week. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers.
So you're legally advising us, Mrs. Lynetti, that resolutions supersede our bylaws. That's what you're legally advising us.
They can.
Okay.
Mr. Cummings.
What's the precedence for that? Like, is it, where where have we set precedence that a resolution overcomes our bylaws? Cause I think to the general public, we read a policy, we expect the policy be followed, one, three dash two. It involves signatures. I don't see signatures. I'm having a hard time deciphering how the resolutions bypasses policy that we've implemented. Cause it seems like the resolution said to send something to Policy Review Committee, and then it would follow the normal processes guided by our bylaws.
Again, your resolution sent it to the Policy Review Committee to send recommendations to you, and that's what you did. You followed your resolution.
I di- I think it it's difficult for us to understand. How does, where, what's the precedence of a resolution overcoming bylaws? I think that's what I'm ask- that's what I'm asking.
Specific action of the School Board different than your normal processes that you would have followed. So you wrote a specific resolution directing how you wanted this issue to be handled, and you voted for that by majority vote to handle it, and that's how it was handled.
Okay.
Ms. Rogers, can you repeat which section of our bylaws were here?
Our bylaws dash one dash three-two specifically state that when we have a policy.
Which section of?
One dash three-two, one dash three-two.
A, B, or C?
A.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It specifically states that they shall first have been reviewed by the school administration designated by the superintendent with aspect oh, who is responsible for the aspect of school operations affected by the how- by the policy. This is supposed to be every time. If it's not been every time, I don't know what to say. I'm just saying for this time, it didn't happen. It also states that the signature of the person submitting the amendment is supposed to be on there. It's not on there. It's supposed to happen every time. If it doesn't happen every time, okay, but I'm asking us to follow our bylaws. I don't understand how asking for signatures that our bylaws tell us we have to have on the changes that you all made is, we can just throw that out the window because the resolution says we have to do the policy. I'm not asking for anything other than our procedures that we have in bylaw one dash three-two section A to be followed. So it should go back, the person who made the changes should be signing the changes that they made. It should be given to the superintendent so that we know that this is workable for the schools and then brought back to us. That's what our procedures are. So I'm not exactly sure how the resolution can supersede what the procedures we have in place.
So I just, I'm gonna comment on that really quickly, and then um Ms. Lynetti has something to say, but I'm looking under section C where it says, requests to adopt, amend, or repeal a policy that are not sent to the Policy Review Committee for review should be submitted to School Board members and the superintendent in writing prior to the School Board meeting. It was in her packet, so it was, at which the proposed action will be reviewed or discussed. A vote for adoption shall take place at a subsequent meeting of the School Board unless the School Board by majority vote moves to approve the policy at that meeting. Majority of votes of the School Board members present at the meeting will be needed for adoption, amendment, or repeal. Ms. Lynetti and then um Ms. Melnick.
As I mentioned, that was the section I was gonna point out to you.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, so in fairness to all, all parties involved, um, there was a different path for this policy. So as the Policy Review Committee has always existed, there was a a road, a road to the board, if you will. And um, I'll use uh Mr. Sutton um as the example. Um, Mr. Sutton used to help create the agenda for the Policy Review Committee, and he worked with staff. Um, and that's, that is, M- Mrs. Rogers, right on that one. That is how all of this happened. It kind of started with staff. It started, um, it it starts the whole policy, and then Mrs. Lynetti weighs in with uh what's in the queue. And there is that process, and and it does kind of get signed off on, and then the um agenda is approved by the Policy Review Committee Chair, and then it goes on. And that that is, that's been the longstanding uh role for policies coming through to the Policy Review Committee, and then it comes to the full board. Um, in this case, um, and that's what I'm really sitting back and thinking about, there was a resolution that was written um by who? Madam Chair, if you could maybe perhaps ask for the attorney that question.
It was drafted, Mrs. Brown drafted in consultation with Mr. Culpepper, and then she, I assisted her with it.
Oh, that's right. So in this case, there was a resolution drafted by the chair, and Mr. Culpepper, and I want to say, I remember that Dr. Robertson was asked, and he was not comfortable um with the way this whole thing happened. And so you know, clearly, again, it's been stated, it was stated earlier by Mrs. Felton, we don't have the votes, but that is the truth. This was a different process, and something changed in this process. And that was that resolution. But all policies up to to now have always gone through that process with staff signing off, the attorney looking it over, then it being brought back to Policy Review Committee, and then it goes on. There is truth to that. I hadn't heard this before she spoke, so.
All right, so we are gonna vote on the motion from Ms. Rogers to send policy five-four back to the PRC. Um, the voting board is open. Mine won't show up.
So Ms. Brown, Chair Brown, would you like to vote?
No.
So Madam Chair, we have five ayes and six nays, so the motion by Ms. Rogers did not pass.
Okay, thank you. We are now back to the original policy five dash four as presented, Ms. Rogers.
Um, so I cannot support any of these changes because we don't follow our bylaws. That is something that is supposed to be followed at all times. I have always been told that you are a rule follower, obviously only when it suits. So I will not be supporting policy five dash four changes.
I'm actually going to speak um since I think everyone so far has had a chance to speak that's in line. And if I'm incorrect, um, please correct me. Um, I actually have an amendment here that I would like to propose. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion. I move to amend policy five-four under section A, purpose, to add a sentence to read, "The School Board values the diversity in our students, families, staff, and volunteers." Do I have a second on that motion? I'm gonna pass those down. Okay, so that's moved by me, um, Regina, and seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Right, and then we'll just go in order. Um, Ms. Melnick. The amendment.
No, I have something larger to say. I have a story, so.
Ms. Rogers, on the amendment.
Yeah, um, I don't think the public wants just a sentence to satisfy them. I think they want genuine work being done. I think they want actual diversity, equity, inclusion in our schools, and I think it's really a almost cheap parlor trick to throw in a sentence at the last minute as a, here, guys, this will satisfy you when it's not genuine. If it were genuine, the chair would have called us anytime between April eighth and, I hadn't heard from you until today. And I find it super disingenuous that we have been asking to be a collaborative partner in this entire process, and the people who have, who are represented by District Seven at large, District Four, District Five, and District Two have been silenced because no one would bother to collaborate with us on this. And now you're gonna just give us a sentence to appease our constituents? I, it is actually gross to me that there is no collaboration, no thought to anything any of our constituents have been saying, and yet this sentence is just supposed to make it all better. Uh, it's, I can't.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, um, we are gonna vote on the amendment to approve the amendment. Excuse me, please. Um, my voting board's still not working.
How do you vote?
Yes.
So Madam Chair, we have five ayes and six nays, so the motion did not pass.
Okay. We are back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion? I know Ms. Melnick was previously in line. Ms. Melnick?
So this has been a pretty sad night for me, but uh just dotted with some irony. And so I'm just gonna remind uh my few colleagues who were there with me in twenty eighteen, and for those of you who are not. But during the legislative session in twenty eighteen, a former School Board member authored a bi- a bill. And it was carried by a senator, was Senate Bill two thirty-eight. And I was on the Legislative Committee, and I called that senator and and asked that question. Uh, I helped me understand what this bill is, and he told me it was a bill that was going to allow students to check two race boxes to perhaps improve their chances of getting into a university of their choice because they might have more, they might be. Because they might have more, they might be more than one of something, I suppose. I didn't understand. Uh, passed, but quickly, all pulled back because the federal government does not allow us to check two boxes. But I think the most important thing is, there was a person on this board who tried to create an opportunity for their child because they thought that was helping or giving their child a leg up. An additional opportunity to, um, to get into the school of their choice. And I was, uh, it was, uh, quite perplexing. But that shows you how important equity is to some people when it's going to benefit them. And maybe just not for everybody. And so, that's been my struggle with all of this. I'm, I'm, I'm a proud educator. I'm a proud member of this board who has worked very hard for all students, all of them. And I'm gonna say this again, for the last time, my worry is that changes you have made have not been thought filled. You have not thought about down the line and what may be affected by this change. There are lots of things coming up. They're gonna be perceived as diversity, equity, and inclusion that we're gonna have to change course on. Because we might be choosing to help a particular group um, that not everybody can, can be a part of. I'm just telling you, we do not know the effects of this. And my other concern is, how will this division pivot if that executive order is deemed unconstitutional? How do we undo all of this? This is, this was a lot of slamming the doors. But I, I, there is no, not a single part of me, as an educator, as a parent, as a school board member, that can get behind this. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Yep, um, we were asked by a member of the public about some of us who've been advocating for diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, why we support Equity Policy Five Dash Four. And so I thought I'd just share a little bit of some of the things that I like about it. Um, and first and foremost, I will say that I did send some constructive feedback that I felt was very, I mean, I thought they were good ideas. And so I am a little disappointed that, you know, that feedback that was given did not make any chance or I did not receive any responses to that feedback. For the public's sake, I said that we do need a section in the new proposed policy that includes definitions. Major reason being because the term unlawful bias, which is utilizing the new proposed policy, to the best of my knowledge, is not a ki, not a phrase utilized within the realm of litigation, um. So, to me, I'm just trying to figure out, alright, well, what does this mean? Um, so having a, a core definition of words, I think is a pretty reasonable ask within a policy. And so the things that I like about this policy, my background's in urban studies, community development. I've worked a lot in literacy development, East Appalachia, so serving nonprofits, literacy programs. And helping, I think, the world be a better place. And I love how in the values it talks about, as a school, these are the things that we adopt that drive us forward when we recognize that educational inequities, that there are educational inequities that exist. And I think taking a value and driving forward and seeing the fact that, yes, there are complex societal and historical factors that have contributed to injustice, that have contributed to our students not being able to learn. Um, I think that says the pace forward. That says, we as a school, as a division, as a city, understand the complexity of the world and we're stating this as a value to help drive our organization forward. And so as I read this policy, to me, this is a foot forward. It's a foot forward in understanding the year twenty twenty-five. It's a foot forward in understanding that today, if you look at kids from different socioeconomic backgrounds, kids from low socioeconomic backgrounds um, have higher rates of PTSD than folks from high socioeconomic backgrounds. So already going into kindergarten, neurologically, there is a difference. That's not the, that's not the result of parenting. It's not the result of, um, you know, it's not the result of parenting. It's not, it's pretty much the result of economic status in one's wellbeing society. That includes access to healthcare, access to resources. And so when we acknowledge that these injustices exist and that we have a plan in place to address, to understand, to say, we want to move forward and ensure that every kid receives a quality education. And I think are taking a step forward. And I know that we are still going to do that as a division. But to me, how do we go from being good to great? How do we go from surviving to thriving? And to me, this policy is some of those things that sets our direction forward into being a, um, I think a forward-thinking institution. And so I have more depth, more thoughts about why I think this policy is a momentum builder and helps address systemic inequity in our society. Um, but I wanted to just take a step back and say to folks, you know, why do I care about these things? Because I know that kids coming into our schools need the resources to thrive. Kids with addiction issues need extra resources. Kids who have literacy issues need extra resources. And when we talk about inequity existing, when we talk about it as something that is part of our society and this is now part of our mission, I think this helps drive the ship towards a true goal, um, that is measurable. I've worked with Rubix that measure culture of competency, which is a mouthful of word at nine fifteen. But I've worked with Rubix. It is a quantifiable thing that we can measure. There's all types of assessments. State of Virginia even has some on their website. So, when I look through this, I think that these are the goals that I would support and will continue to support. And I know that many folks who work here are gonna continue to support. Um, and so I just wanted to yield my time and say, you know, that's why I felt that this policy is important to keep on going because I think it's innovative. I do not see line by line how this is um, and this can, is line by line how this, you know, disagree or when looking at Trump's executive order, how that says this policy is, you know, is invalid, um. And for me, I just, I'm disappointed. I mean, I think it was a great thing. I think a lot of work went into it. And I really wish at bare minimum that, hey, I gotta reply to my email that said, hey, here's a constructive feedback. Here's a simple way that we could potentially move for, you know, that we could add to this to make it more, um, more cohesive as a policy, but that's all.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, I call for the votes to approve Policy Five Dash Four as presented. Is it not letting you guys vote?
Is there any X that they can hit? I know that there was something. Alright, we'll go by the line. Mr. Callen, how do you vote? Mr. Cummings, how do you vote? Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote? Ms. Felton, how do you vote? Ms. Weems, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Brown, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Melnick already voted. Uh, Dr. Green, how do you vote? Mr. Bonesteel, how do you vote? Mr. Dwyer, how do you vote? Ms. Rogers, how do you vote? So, Madam Chair, we have six ayes and five nays, so the motion did pass for Policy Five Dash Four as presented.
Thank you. We are now on to um, H, which is the twenty-five, twenty-six schedule of meetings that is in front of you. Um, as everybody had a chance to review this, this is based on our bylaw change again on, um, April twenty-second that was unanimous. Um, that states during the months of July and August and December, the school board will generally hold one regular bridge meeting. I call for a motion to approve that as presented. Moved, moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Vice Chair Weems. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the, um, twenty-five, twenty-six schedule of meetings. Madam Clerk, do you want us to just raise our hands if we're in favor?
Sure, so all in favor, please raise your hand. And Ms. Melnick, how do you vote for the schedule?
My vote's on the board. I don't know.
Give me one second to put the votes in. So, Madam Chair-
And I tried to raise my hand to speak, but it doesn't matter.
So, Madam Chair, we have ten ayes and one nay, so the motion to pass for the schedule of meetings for, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Um, we are now to committee, organization, and board reports. Does anyone have anything to report? Ms. Melnick?
Um, tomorrow, Dr. Robertson and I have, um, um, our last quarterly CSEP and Governor's School Meeting. And then I've talked to Chair Brown about following up at some point, um, with the full board, um, on, on both of those committees.
Thank you. Um, and I, I just wanna make another announcement that I have the list here for one-on-ones with Dr. Robertson. Um, only one board member filled in their names, so I don't know if other board members didn't receive it, but I will pass it back down. Um, and at this time, we are going to return to closed session. So Vice Chair Weems, would you please read the motion to go back into closed?
I note that the school board resets into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia two dot two dash three seven eleven, Part A, Paragraphs one, two, seven, and eight, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Any teacher shall be permitted to be present during a closed meeting in which there is a discussion or a consideration of a disciplinary matter that involves the teacher and some student and the student involved in the matter is present, provided that the teacher makes a written request to be present to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Nothing in this subdivision, however, shall be construed to authorize a closed meeting by a local governing body or an elected school board to discuss compensation matters that affect the membership of such body, body or board collectively. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record contained in any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting of such student, parents, or guardians. So request in writing and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Number seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe it will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Number eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the body, public body in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Namely, to discuss, A, discussion of superintendent's evaluation process, B, complaints concerning student conduct, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, and D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Moved by Vice Chair Weems. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to go into closed session. Um, and my board is still not working. So, raise your hand if you're in favor.
So, Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay, thank you.
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 199 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099